But they're also very sneaky.
Yeah.
I mean, there was one year Rachel, when Rachel was on, and she said, "Oh, I'm gonna go out, you know, meet one of Brandon's stuff, and I drop her off." They spent the whole afternoon.
2015 Longmont City Study Session to Order. Could we please start with a roll call?
Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Councilmembers Bagley, Christensen, Finley, Levison.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Santos.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Okay, let's stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna start with, public invited to be heard, and the first one up is Marilyn Hughes, so please come down and state your name and address.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Marilyn Hughes, and I live at 1126 Fourth Avenue. Tonight, I would like to talk about two subjects: people that are homeless and money. About a month ago, I woke up and found a small woman sleeping on my porch swing. As I came out of the house, she sat up and started telling me her story. It had to do with broken homes and broken dreams. This woman told me her name was Tina. She was an artist and gave me a card she had created. She talked very quickly, as if she was afraid of silence, and I listened to her. I was struck by the fact that someone needed to sleep on my porch swing and had nowhere else to go. It felt like a wake-up call to me. Although I regularly donate to the Boulder Shelter, I feel strongly that there is not enough being done in Longmont. I vowed to bring this subject up whenever possible, so tonight I ask the council to consider money. Thousands of dollars are donated to campaigns for council, but not thousands of dollars donated for a place to sleep for those less fortunate. If we are a caring community, we care for those who cannot donate large amounts of money. We care about all the people. I ask for balance in our community. Quietly below our collective radar, there are people who cannot speak for themselves and people who have given up because they believe that only money talks. I'm angry about this and profoundly sad, and I ask each of you, represent our town, to consider where we are going and what we are doing. I believe that you can make a decision to start emphasizing some different priorities. Development that is sustainable has its place, but you have a duty to look beyond market-driven economics and develop concrete plans to solve the issues of people who are homeless in our city, people many of whom are working but have no place to sleep. We need emergency shelter in Longmont and not just when it's below 30 degrees. We need housing first. If Utah can do it, so can Longmont. In the end, the question becomes, is Longmont a city with a heart or just a pocketbook? Thank you.
Diana Dyer? Dyer?
Or dear.
Dear Diana Dyer. I'll answer to anything close.
Good evening, mayor and members of the council. I'm Deanna Dyer. I live at 513 Emery Street, and I'm the chair of the Government Affairs Committee for the Longmont Association of Realtors. I've also served on the WFHTF, the Workforce Housing Task Corps. And as the report that we generated noted, affordable rental housing is Longmont's most pressing need right now. LAR believes that the city should focus first and foremost on creating policy that will encourage the construction of new rental units and the retention of affordable rental units for wage earners below 50 percent of the AMI. LAR urges the city council to finalize its overall affordable housing policy before considering specific strategies. It seems premature to focus on inclusionary zoning at this time. LAR looks forward to hearing about the feedback received from developers. However, we reiterate our opinion that this sector should not be singled out to bear the financial burden of creating for-sale affordable units with deed restrictions that restrict buyers and become impossible to sell if the market changes. If inclusionary zoning worked, as so many people claim that it did, why did nearly 70 percent of the people want out of that program as soon as they had the opportunity to do so? Condominiums are affordable for first-time homebuyers, and developers cite costly liability and insurance premiums caused by the current legal climate in Colorado as a primary reason for building apartments rather than condos. And when was the last time anyone submitted an application to build condos in Longmont? We're disappointed that the concept of a construction defects ordinance, which would encourage the construction of more condominiums, hasn't been brought back to the council for discussion. There are many current examples of municipal ordinances available, so it is not as if the city's legal staff would have to start from scratch. We don't understand why this topic keeps getting delayed. Finally, we strongly urge the city council to consider incentives rather than mandates. While our market has seen a remarkable recovery from the economic downturn, mandates will have a negative effect on the construction of new housing, and that will impact affordability for all Longmont citizens now and in the future. Thanks.
Thank you. Gordon Pedro.
Good evening, mayor and city council. I'm Gordon Pedro, 2639 Falcon Drive. I'm speaking on item 4A, which is the Affordable Housing. The PowerPoint slideshow in your packet is headed Comprehensive Plan Housing Element Update. So, given that you're talking about your housing element of your comprehensive plan, I looked at the information that was in the packet. I know there's gonna be more details provided here later tonight, but it looks to me like all of those options that you're considering or being presented tonight are appropriate to move forward into the next level of discussion about your Longmont area comprehensive plan. The more tools you have and you put into the plan, the more tools future city councils are going to have to try to address the constantly changing needs and the environment that we're working in. If you take those tools, combine them with the resources, $500,000 in your 2016 budget and hopefully $500,000 more, more, and more each year, then you have resources to do, as the consultants have indicated, that is, you have incentives to mix with the options that you have, and you can really develop, and future councils can develop, a real affordable housing program. So I encourage you to keep them all in there and move them forward. I do not feel the same about the discussion that's been kicked around regarding the construction defects ordinance. It seems to me, reading the October 14th Times Call, that ordinance is to provide builders more protection from lawsuits filed by homeowners. One member of the council berated the city attorney for not moving fast enough to protect builders. My concern is that I don't see that there's a direct connection between affordable housing in Longmont and the defects law. I checked with the Development Services Center today. There are townhouse projects, there are condo projects being constructed right now, today, in this community. So it hasn't prohibited the industry to build those units, 'cause they're under construction right now. So therefore, I ask you to be really careful when looking at this. Make sure it's gonna really serve an issue and not just protect developers and builders from their homeowners. Most of us common homeowners, whether it's a condo, townhouse, or a single-family unit, all we want is quality construction, we want what we paid for, and we don't have enough money to be suing people frivolously. I hate to say it, we're just trying to get our payments made and those type things. So we sue as a last resort, only after we feel that we've been royally screwed by the builder, and that's, we ask you to protect us, not builders. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sheri Malloy.
Good evening. Sheri Malloy, 2113 Rangeview Lane. Longmont residents are fortunate that our city council candidates must report contributions at certain dates before Election Day. Some critical information came from the first reports candidates filed last week. We have eight candidates for three seats this election. Three candidates are incumbents. All have received the majority of their funding from the land development slash real estate industry. A fourth new candidate has also received the same package of funding. We're talking thousands of dollars here. Four candidates have not received nor accepted this special interest money. These candidates are Joan Peck, Paul Renick, Sarah Levison, and Ron Gaitos. I'm speaking publicly tonight because it's important and the good people of Longmont need to know where council candidates are getting their contributions. Very sadly, money in politics translates to influence. These developers, business, builders, realtors give candidates money because they want to have influence on their decisions regarding the future of our city. As constituents, we are curious about how beholden these candidates, if elected, might be to these special interests when making decisions regarding land use, development, affordable housing, the St. Frank Corridor, et cetera. One has to wonder what these special interests expect in return for their very large donations. Do they hope it will assert influence on tonight's discussion about affordable housing? For instance, the construction defects law that Councilwoman Finley keeps bringing up. This state law helps to protect people whose homes and finances are hurt by poorly done construction. Like other professions, builders need to be held accountable for their work, and homeowners should have some recourse when that work is done poorly. Ms. Finley's repeated accusation regarding this law's negative impacts on new development ultimately aims to benefit developers at the expense of regular people. Her suspicions are unfounded and a waste of staff time to investigate, as we can all see there is a building bonanza happening. Similarly, we have the city's old inclusionary zoning clause that the 2011 city council nexted. This clause mandated developers make 10 percent of new building designated affordable housing or provide cash in lieu. Why hasn't this council reinstated this? While inclusionary zoning is not the whole solution, certainly it would help and be a step in the right direction, that direction being serving people and not just lining the pockets of the land development slash real estate industry. This council has been wringing your hands for far too long regarding affordable housing. People are hurting while the profiteers can't count their money fast enough. Now we see big money being poured into certain council candidates' races for city council. What are we to think? It certainly helps inform me as I get ready to cast my votes for Ward 3 at large and mayor. Thank you.
Georgetta Johnson.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Georgetta Johnston, and I live at 619 Kimberk Street. And our landlord tried to show somebody our house again, his duplex, and so we still need a house, please. We was offered a apartment with one bedroom, but that won't work for us. And my husband fell, he's not here tonight, because he fell Sunday, blacked out, and I came home from the store, and there was the fire department, the fire engine, and the ambulance, and I thought it was my neighbor, and I ran in the house, ran out, and it was him, and so I ran. But he didn't, praise the Lord, he didn't break any bones, he didn't have a stroke or heart attack, he just, they're just working on getting him organized. But he has been a volunteer, as I shared, for many years, 30 years, and the police department, the council, most of you people know him. And we just saw some of you at a meeting at the Methodist Church, which I was real impressed with, and I feel like some way, somehow, there ought to be, able, there ought to be, with you working together with Longmont and the different things that comes in for us to be able to get a house. We shouldn't have to beg. It's been May, June, July, August, September, October, and now it's getting ready to be November. So this is really interesting, you know? We shouldn't have to do that. And it isn't that we don't have money, it's just that we don't have large money, since he has had to retire at 25 years from the post office on disability. So I'm trusting that something's gonna come up, that you're gonna work this out, and like I'm hearing, the housing too, and another thing is that there's a place in Boulder that's, that helps people get jobs. We need, they were saying that we need a building here where we help people homeless and help them get a job and help them get a home instead of just give, give, give and going nowhere, just round in a circle. That's what I was sharing with them, that I see in this place in Boulder. So, thank you very much, and I'm trusting that you are working on this and gonna do a wonderful job.
Could someone get her in touch with the people at R-Center, because they have a program exactly for this type of help?
Well, we've been to the R-Center.
Julie Conahagin?
Hi. My name is Julie Conahagin, and I live at 911 A. Laramie Boulevard in Boulder, where I'm a homeowner and board member in a condo association there, and I would like to talk about the construction defect issue as well. I, my friends and family, including all the way back to my grandparents, live or have lived and done business throughout Colorado, including Longmont and the rest of Boulder County and elsewhere in Colorado. I believe that the construction defect laws that Longmont is being asked to take under consideration are not what they appear to be, in that they would fail homeowners and sanction unsafe construction practices. As board president of my HOA, I know the entire process of learning that the home I bought had massive, serious defects, bad enough to, in fact, threaten the value of my mortgage and my health and my safety. I would not have bought the home I bought if I had known it was so grossly, wrongly built. No one wants to go down the road to pursue such repairs. My home's construction defects are remedied now, but I feel strongly enough to continue reaching out against proposed construction defect laws. Without the current legal protections, the financial, logistic, professional, emotional impact of construction defects would be more devastating than it was on the HOA where I live, with 40 percent of owners in the affordable program. That's in one HOA. There would have been thousands in special assessments. I was doing no less than scrambling to help save our mortgages, along with everyone else, by taking part in filing claim. And the impact on my relationships, my livelihood and my family life was overly challenging. Please keep in place homeowners' ability to fairly pursue repair for precarious, unsafe construction defects. I join others in encouraging Longmont to support policies that can truly promote the development of multifamily housings, especially housing which is affordable, if that's what you really want. And thank you for listening.
Thank you. Heidi Storz?
Hello, my name is Heidi Storz, and I live at 7324 North 83rd Street. I'm here both as a homeowner, but also as a legal advocate for homeowners and homeowner associations when they suffer from construction defects. And I'm here to ask you to, please not be sheep. Please don't just follow what other cities have done in this state, which is to take away rights from homeowners and to stack the deck even more in the favor of builders and developers when it comes to new construction. Please do educate yourselves about this issue, about the law, about construction defect laws in Colorado. When you do, you'll find that the construction defect laws since 1986 have been builder favorable in Colorado. In fact, Colorado is the fourth from the bottom in terms of the protections it provides homeowners and is, I guess, the opposite is true in terms of the protections it's giving builders and developers. We have among the shortest statutes of repose in the nation in Colorado, which means we give builders one of the shortest cutoffs of liability as it is. To take even more away from homeowners really will be unfair and put people in a position that they can't protect their largest investment that they've made. So I would urge you, please educate yourselves. Please don't just take what the builders, developers, and realtors are telling you at face value, and please reach out to homeowners and organizations that can provide you with the information that you need to make a wise decision on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Jacoby.
Good evening again. I'm Rick Jacoby. I live at 419 Collier Street. And for a brief change in topic, I want to speak to you, since I know you've been talking to the St. Frank Valley School District, I want to talk to you a little bit about early childhood education. At the last meeting, you know, I was here with a bunch of folks talking about the noise of trains, and I am a family physician. I always chagrined when someone else brought up the issue of health effects of train noise on children. I hadn't occurred to me, so I Googled train noise and child development, and I was astounded how many pages came up. I looked at just the first few pages, cut and pasted a few comments from those articles, and I'd like to share a few of those with you. I printed up a little bit for you there if you want to look, and certainly I encourage you to Google it yourself. It's impressive how much is published already about this. From the American Psychiatrics Association, they said, "Noise impairs a child's development and may have a lifelong effect on educational attainment and overall health. Numerous studies now show that children exposed to households or classrooms near railways are slower in their development of cognitive and language skills and have lower reading scores." From the Oxford Medical Journal, "A very well-controlled study compared primary school children taught in a classroom which was exposed to high levels of railway noise with children in a quiet classroom in the same school. Significant differences in reading scores..." Significant differences in reading scores were found between the children in the two classrooms." From the National Institutes of Health, these are not, when you Google, you can get garbage, but these are very quality sources. "A study of children in a school near an elevated train track showed how exposure to noise can affect children's reading ability. Half of the students in the study were in classrooms facing a train track, and the other half were in classrooms in the school's quieter back section. Students on the quieter side performed better on reading tests, and by sixth grade, they were a full-grade point ahead of their students in noisier classrooms. The researcher and school principal persuaded the school board to have acoustical tile installed in the classrooms adjacent to the tracks. The transit authority also treated the tracks near the school to make them less noisy. A follow-up study published found that children's reading scores improved after these interventions were put in place. After we did the study, more than 25 other studies were done examining the effect of noise on children's learning ability, the researcher said. They have all found the same thing to be true: noise can affect children's learning." The last article I, I'll just take a brief quote from, is the Southern Medical Journal, "Noise affects learning, reading, problem-solving, motivation, school performance, and social and emotional development." And mitigating train noise is one way the city and the school district can work together to improve our children's education, health, and quality of life." So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Terry Benjamin?
Good evening, mayor and council. Terry Benjamin, live at 621 Gay Street. Here to speak about the affordable housing issues, surprise, surprise. You know, I keep my own newspapers and articles and all that stuff, so I just want to kind of continue to create this sense of urgency based on what's happening with the numbers. So, this is 9/23, renters get ready to take it on the chin as if they haven't already. This is a summary of a report out of the Joint Center for Housing Studies at Harvard. And it said, "The number of households severely burdened by rent are those spending more than 50 percent of their income on rent." 50 percent of their income. Is set to rise at least 11 percent from an estimated $11.8 million to $13.1 million by 2025. And that's roughly the period the comp plan's going to be looking at, 10, 15 years out. The study's base case, which assumes both rents and incomes rise 2 percent annually, expects a number of severely rent-burdened households of those over age 65 will rise around 39 to 42 percent. Compared to the, over the next decade, compared with around 27 percent among Hispanic households and 12 percent for single-person households. And it goes on to say, "The private sector is unable to supply new units at rents low enough to reach low-income renters." So that's a few weeks ago. Today, I saw one, "Think your rent's too darn high? Just wait." So here we go again, more data around this problem. So, you know, the facts are there, the problem's getting worse, and I'm here to kind of lift up the comp plan as you guys move into the next phase of thinking about how to respond to this slowly rising crisis. This guy, you know, has several tools laid out in it. And as Gordon said a minute ago, which you guys are about, in this phase, it seems to me at least, are looking at the different tools. From kind of hanging on to what we have out there in the rental market that's affordable, to creating new units through tools like targeted inclusionary zoning. You know, we went through this battle of inclusionary zoning a few years ago, and I think the baby got thrown out with the bathwater there, I'll be honest with you. The new version of that, the 2.0 or 3.0 version of it, is more focused on targeted, well-thought-through inclusionary zoning that's mapped out in here. And so my hope is, and encouragement is, is to keep these things going, keep them alive, as opposed to kind of going back and reacting to what was kind of done or thought about or felt a couple of years ago when that was thrown out there, ways to make that work. So, thank you for-
Thank you, Terry. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank y'all very much for digging into this next phase, and good luck.
Yeah. I think all, does anybody else want to speak? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, City Council. I'm Strider Benston, 951 Seventeenth Avenue. I appreciate everything I've been hearing tonight, and it was interesting learning about repose, the liability cutoff for defective building. It's kind of like the gun lobby. So, government is involved, always, the point is, on what side. We, for the last 50 or 60 years, prior to that, in the 50s, you had GI loans, FHA up quite a bit after that, and it subsidized or helped people at the lower and marginal end of the economy establish, and that's very much, along with union rights and citizen rights, created the middle class in this country. With the Bankster ripoff and the toxic mortgage game of the 90s and early 2000s, that has sort of been collapsing. And what we have seen is the lower end of the market, especially here in Longmont, has gone up in rent prices about 30 to 35 percent since the flood. And it was already very hard to reach for anybody even close to minimum wage or part-time pickup work. So, I appreciate that the city council is looking into this, and I don't have a clear answer, except that there must be more support in some form or other for construction of lower-to-mid-range housing, because developers always look for the top range and, the middle-to-top range, and then those prices jack up. You saw the inflation in the housing market from the 80s through 2007. They go up 200,000, 300, 350, 400. And so, that went pretty well for them until the banks took all the money out of the economy, and now here we are swimming again. But speaking of swimming, the flood, most of the people who lost their housing were at the lower end, and that flooded the lower end of the market, so the prices went up. Very large portion of people who used to be marginally okay are now marginally collapsing. So, take a look at this. Thank you.
All right, is there anybody else I'd like to speak at, publicly invited to be heard? Okay. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I have a statement here since I was attacked during Public Invited to Be Heard. You know, that type of candidate is in the pocket of developers, attack is very old, and frankly, a very tired assault, launched time and time again by area anti-growth and anti-business individuals against almost anybody who's willing to state that they support good business and a diverse growing economy. They favor that kind of smear because it often allows them to avoid defending their own out-of-mainstream views about how a city should prosper. It also has the advantage of being a wild accusation that they can throw around without much consequence, as long as they don't have a conscience. It's the local political version of, "Have you stopped beating your wife?" And I don't think most Longmont voters appreciate that kind of mudslinging.
Well, I guess if you made a statement, I'm going to make a statement now. People in this community, they know me, they know how generous I am. If you think I'm going to be influenced by a $590 contribution to my account to not do the right thing for the most people, I'm deeply hurt, but I'm a very generous person. You know, if all landlords were like me, we wouldn't have an affordable house, you know, housing, because I haven't raised rents on my two tenants for years, even though my costs keep going up, insurance, property taxes. So, you know, I'm not motivated by material goods in this world, because I have everything that I've got out of life. I've got a wife that loves me, I've got two great kids, I've got a great business, I've always been successful at everything I do, so I'm just going to continue to fight to do the right thing for what I think is for the most people of this community. All right, I guess we're ready to start the special reports and presentation. So I've got a proclamation designating October 28th as Vance-Brant Municipal Airport Commemorative Day in Longmont. And David Slater, airport manager, and Don Dolce, airport advisory board chair, is here to accept the proclamation. So I'll go ahead and read the proclamation first, and then you guys are free to make a statement.
You look like a Mormon missionary.
Yes. A proclamation designating October 28th, 2015, as Vance-Brant Municipal Airport Commemorative Day in Longmont, Colorado. Whereas, the Vance-Brant Municipal Airport aircraft operation exceeds 66,000 per year, making it the sixth busiest general aviation airport in Colorado. And whereas, the Vance-Brant Municipal Airport businesses and related businesses contribute to over $9 million in Longmont in employment payroll. And whereas, the Vance-Brant Municipal Airport has continued to foster development of air commerce and achieved the status of an airport development zone. And whereas, the Vance-Brant Municipal Airport has remained resilient throughout economic hardships and continues its growth, whereby it contributes $27.7 million to the Longmont and North Denver region's economic, economy. And whereas, the airport is celebrating 70 years of service to the community in its current location and is committed to providing services for future generations. Now, therefore, I, Dennis Alcooms, mayor, by the virtue of authority vested in me and the city council of the city of Longmont, do hereby proclaim October 28th, 2015, as Vance-Brant Municipal Airport Commemorative Day in Longmont. And I invite all citizens in the community to celebrate the importance of the Vance-Brant Municipal Airport now and year-round.
Don Dolce, chairman of the airport advisory board. I would like to say that on Saturday, we'll be celebrating this event, the 70th anniversary of Vance-Brant Regional Airport. A number of activities are planned at the airport, starting at 11:30 a.m., and I would like, I would like to invite you and all members of the community to come out and celebrate with us.
Well, I'll be there. I think we'll all be there. Go ahead.
David Slater, airport manager, city of Longmont, 229 Airport Road. Mayor Coombs, council members, I just wanted to say a very appreciative and warm thank you for all the support that y'all provided, as well as the city staff in welcoming me here earlier this year and providing the support that's needed to help the airport grow. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, your first study session item will be led out by Kathy Fedler, our Housing and Community Investment Manager. She will be leading council on a discussion regarding affordable housing program and policy options. I'm not going to go through all this. Where's slideshow there? Nope. Which, where's slideshow? I can't see it. Here?
Yeah.
Kathy Fedler, Housing and Community Investment Manager for the city. So, I'm just going to introduce this and then turn it over to the consultants to present the bulk of this, but I wanted to go through, from the last council meeting, what we have been working on and where we stand with things. So, exploring the construction defects law or measures, where you are going to report out on this item after we get through this presentation and receive direction on the items before you in the presentation. So that's coming up right after this item. Identifying funding for affordable housing within the general fund was a direction we received at the last meeting. And as you know, for 2016, $425,000 has been set aside in the ongoing budget, and $75,000 in one-time funding from the Human Service Agency Fund, for a total of $500,000 for 2016, and then $425,000 for 2017 and beyond so far, with adoption of the budget, assuming that hasn't happened yet, right? Okay. We're going to go through tonight the strategies for affordable housing preservation and the potential targeted inclusionary approaches. And then the last item that we got direction from council last time was reconfiguring the city's affordable housing incentive approaches, and that we'll be bringing back in the first quarter of 2016, after we get more direction and definition tonight, which will then go into the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan, with floors and ceilings set for different development standards, which will allow us to then determine which of those incentives, what adjustments to make to those incentives that are going to have the most impact, depending on what we're trying to target. So, I'll be here for questions afterwards, and we'll turn it over to the consultants. Thanks.
All right, perfect. Thank you for having us back to the council meeting, mayor and members of council. I'm Andrew Knutson, and with me is my colleague, Matt Prosser. We're with Economic and Planning Systems. And we have, we have an incremental approach to this project, which is good, because it's complex, and the communities that take it incrementally often get the furthest. We are here to review some of the research we've provided and update you on that and provide ultimately direction at the end of the presentation in terms of some dialogue about where you'd like to go. Just by way of background, EPS, our firm, is currently working in Portland, Nashville, Denver, Telluride, and of all places, well, I shouldn't say that, hopefully they're not listening, Dallas, Texas, on affordable housing. It is growing in importance across the country, and everyone is trying to figure out solutions. And our job, with as diverse a client list as Telluride, Colorado, and Dallas, Texas, is to figure out how to calibrate different tools in each community. And we want to just say, "We're here to help you chart a path that works here locally in Longmont." And with that, let's just dive in. Why don't we go to the next slide? All right.
Yeah, I'm going to touch briefly on sort of what the community's already doing to preserve affordability. And then one potential tool that was discussed last time we were here, affordable housing easements. So in terms of preserving affordability, the city is already doing quite, quite a lot. Through your Affordable Housing Fund, your community development block grants, and your home, the home program, you have invested dollars in three different types, or three different ways of preserving affordability. First, acquisition of existing expiring affordable rental homes, so income-restricted rental homes that are reaching the end of their time period to where they are still income-restricted. The city has stepped in with funds with nonprofit partners to purchase those units and maintain their affordability. You've also invested in rehabilitation of affordable rental homes, as well as the rehabilitation of affordable homeowner units. And you can see on this slide, the amount of funds that you have invested under each fund. And- you have invested under each fund and to the type of program you invested them and the number of units impacted. And I will say that all of these have, the use of funds has required a defined period of affordability, have set income limits, required deed restrictions, and included reinvestment in existing units. And so these are all the things that you should be doing to preserve affordability, and so you're doing a very good job using the funds that you have allocated in the past. So a potential tool that was brought up in our last meeting was the idea of an affordable housing easement. So we just wanted to bring that back to you to give a little more information on what that is and how that would work and how that's similar to what you're doing already. So affordable housing easement is basically an agreement with the property owner to preserve a certain percentage of existing housing units as affordable. So you can specify within the easement the number or percent of units, the level of affordability, and the time length for affordability requirements. It's a tool aimed at maintaining existing affordable housing units, or potentially incenting units to be maintained as affordable as they're built. It functions similar to a historic preservation easement, where you provide a financial benefit. Typically, in historic preservations, that's a tax credit, but in this situation, it would be something different. But the idea is through the granting of the easement, you get some sort of financial benefit, and so the way that you could do that is through fee reductions, tax waivers, rebates, or payments directly from your Affordable Housing Fund or your general fund. And so this is really just clarity on this tool, and it's a pretty simple tool that may not have a large effect, but we think is worth maintaining within sort of your quiver of tools for affordable housing.
So you're going to hear a lot of different ideas, and the, as Matt was referring to, all right, we doing conversions?
Yeah.
Okay. Lot of different tools, whether they're arrows in the quiver or just a multifaceted approach. There are a variety of things to consider to ultimately combine or reject into a program. Preserving rental projects is one option, and basically it is to limit the demolition or conversion of rental units, and this can be done through a variety of options. Either you can ban condo conversions and not approve condominium apps, that's one choice. Another is to require a certain percentage of units in a condo conversion project to be set aside as affordable, or you can provide, kind of moving across the spectrum, a first right of refusal, such that the city or housing authority or some other entity, some kind of a partnership that the city has with some other entity, can step in and purchase the project prior to conversion. The goal, as you well can understand, is to, in the whole world of supply and demand, maintain as much supply as possible and thereby reduce the pressure on pricing, particularly on the rental. As it was mentioned during the comments to be heard by the public, the rental inventory is under more pressure than the ownership inventory with greater price increases. So it's particularly well-targeted, given that unique attribute of the Longmont market. Another approach is an inclusionary housing approach, and we have helped other communities tailor programs for their geographies, and you can see on this slide that there's generally an approach that works around geography, or the economy, or given, or specific regulatory approaches. Geography typically tries to link housing and the residents of that housing to transit and/or employment, and so you have this jobs-housing connection. The economic approach really looks at different parts of the community and the market pressure in those parts of the community, and addresses the solution through that approach. And then regulatory just looks at the options available. In this case, we're looking at annexation and rezoning. In terms of concepts, it ultimately depends on what the council thinks is the highest priority. If it's around employment and ensuring that local businesses have a robust pool of employees across the wage spectrum, you might want to tailor a program to address that. If it's diversity and vibrancy within neighborhoods, you might want to look at it in terms of how do you mix it up, if you will. And at the end of the day, being able to link a philosophy, if you will, or a priority to a tool just is good business all the way around, and helps not only articulate the program, but it helps define what goes into the program. Some considerations, oh, just in general, a phrase that we use with clients is that you can look at it through all these different metrics, and we're a very data-driven firm. We're light on tables tonight, but it's probably good for a public presentation. Ultimately, you know, what are the data that turn on or off certain segments of the community? And you can define it by traditional neighborhoods, you can do it by census tracts, you can do it any kind of geography you want, but certain conditions within that geography have to meet a test, for example, quarter mile away around, quarter mile away from a high-frequency transit lane, for example. And then you can look at it in terms of neighborhood attributes that are often commonly recognized by the development community, and that component of the community is then on for the regulation. So hopefully, that gives you an idea of ultimately how the ordinance is developed and applied. Some considerations, simplicity is good. These types of programs get complex, and the simpler they are, the better and the more effective they are. Clarity about priorities, like we were talking about earlier, ultimately generates a broader buy-in from the community, typically. Generally, we believe, based on past research and what we talked about at previous presentations, that 10% is a good figure in terms of a set aside and a good working assumption, at least for what we're talking about tonight. The last thing I'll say is that there's been a lot of debate, and there is this debate in every single community where we work. What's best, mandates or incentives? And we would like to introduce into the conversation that it may not be an either-or kind of conversation, but it may be both, and we will talk more about that at the end in terms of how incentives can be effective, and they also cannot be effective. So ultimately, you want incentives that are, and what do those look like? So we will revisit that at the end. In terms of evaluation criteria, this is something that we developed to help people think about, you know, what's good, and what ultimately addresses the problem. Yield is certainly important, kind of bang for the buck. If we're going to go down this road, how do we know that there's enough here to make it worth our collective wow? Location, just to revisit the notion of nexus, if you will, transit, employment, services, what ultimately makes it easier for the city in terms of how it functions. Correlation to housing, ultimately, who are the beneficiaries, and how do you want to identify that? And then impact on market, what ultimately, how do these policies affect what's going on in the market, and how do you impact it in a way that ultimately is beneficial and not an overreach? Because that's not what anyone's interested in either. So with that, we'll look at a couple different, several different examples, and then wrap it up in about five minutes.
So I'm going to walk you through basically four different approaches that you could potentially take. These are sort of framework approaches for you to understand the concepts, and definitely need additional tailoring and specifics added to them, but we wanted to give you the framework for them so you could understand how they would work, and then consider how you think they fit within Longmont. So the first approach would be the concept of centers and corridors. So this is working very much in line with the comprehensive plan update, but the concept here, as you can see, centers and corridors being shown primarily in the red and purple colors. The rules here would be requiring 10% of new units, or of new units to be affordable for development projects within downtown mixed-use corridor, regional center, or employment land designations within the comp plan. Variables that you could add to this, it could just apply to residential projects, but you could also build in an equivalent requirement for commercial and industrial projects. So as commercial or industrial space comes in, you can use a employee generation rate to estimate a sort of an impact on the housing within the community and derive a demand or a targeted amount of fee and lieu associated with that demand created. The benefits of this approach, it functions to generate affordable housing in areas where there's transit and there are jobs, and so it's connecting housing with jobs and transit primarily. Negative impacts, it increases costs to developers within the city's redevelopment areas. The majority of our centers and corridors are areas that are built and really going to be redevelopment places in the future, and redevelopment is more costly than greenfield development, and so it's an additional financial cost that's associated with development in these areas. So looking at sort of the criteria or the evaluation criteria, we kind of, for each of the examples or the frameworks that we're going to give you, we kind of walked through really simply what, how we thought about the different evaluation criteria. And so first, we look at yield. It's a very, it's a difficult issue to get at, especially in terms of redevelopment or land that's zoned for a variety of uses. You can't just estimate what the capacity for housing is, because it really depends on which parcels are developed for housing and what density they're developed at. So we're looking at sort of vacant acreage as kind of a benchmark to understand, and so as we go through each of these, you can kind of sense what the yield capacity would be based on the relative level of vacant acreage or developable acreage. And so here, it's 1,800 acres, and you can see in the different examples how those vary. The location, it's in transit areas, or areas with good transportation and transit. It's in areas with employment and areas with services, all areas that are well-suited for affordable housing, because it connects those folks closer to where they can work and access services. The correlation, basically the same thing. It helps lower transportation costs in places affordable housing near jobs. The impact on market, increases in project costs, as I stated, may slow or reduce redevelopment activity, and the majority of these sort of corridor and center areas for the city don't have housing currently, so they're sort of unproven for housing, and so it's replacing a requirement within areas that don't have housing, so it's difficult to know how the market will react with that additional component added on. The next approach is what we're calling an economic approach, and so this approach more looks at tying the requirement of having affordable housing with the home prices or the rental prices that are occurring in different parts of the city. And so we conceptually broke the city up into six areas. As you can see, there's four areas that are primarily residential, and then two that are primary employment. And the ones that have residential, we kind of measured what their mean and median average home sale price were, and ones, areas that had a median home sale price over 80% of AMI, we can potentially turn on, or potentially turn on, or require any development projects in those areas to require 10% affordable homes, where the ones that aren't, in areas that have higher average home sale prices are not subject to this requirement. And then areas that have employment uses traditionally and don't really have a lot of homes, you can either choose to include those or not include those. So I've sort of already gone through this. The rules, 10% of new units within the designated areas, we're saying here, any area that has a median home sale price of over 80% of AMI. The city can choose which, a number of districts, we suggest about five to 10, and choose whether they're on or off based on data that illustrates that there are pressures within the market for affordable housing within them. You can tie these to a lot of different geographies. We kind of tied them to land use designations in the comp plan, but you could tie them to census tracts, you could tie them to various other things. So they don't necessarily have to fall the way that we suggested, but this is one way you could tie it to your comprehensive plan. Variables, you can include requirement for employment areas, as I mentioned, and you can use variable fee and loews for different areas. So the requirement in a certain portion may be higher than another, so you can vary between the different segments of the city. Benefits, it generates affordable units in the least affordable areas. That's really the main target here. It's trying, that mixture that Andrew was talking about, trying to ensure there's a mixture of incomes within certain neighborhood areas. Negative impacts, it may shift the market demand out of the high-demand housing areas. It may not. It may not generate enough units because it's only applied to a limited portion of the city. As we are kind of conceptualizing it, these lower two portions of the city are the only areas that would be turned on, and they might not generate that much affordable housing. So in terms of yield, based on those two southern areas that we had highlighted here, I'll go back, the two, the red and sort of pinkish color at the bottom would be sort of the two areas turned on. The yield from that would be 740 acres, so that's substantially less than the other option that we presented. So there's less potential yield here. The location is primarily only in the southern part of the city for now. You could include the employment areas if you wanted to. Correlation, as I mentioned, it places affordable housing in the least affordable areas, and we've kind of already gone through the impact on market. It could shift the development pattern, and it may slow development in your most active housing areas, and we know that the creation of new housing in the city is really a main priority, as that the rent and price levels are somewhat a reaction to the lack of inventory, and so in creating more inventory will help provide more options for people. The next approach would be an annexation approach. So the next two we're going to talk about are sort of regulatory approaches, and so the rule here is 10% of new units, or yeah, 10% of new units must be affordable for development projects within annexation areas. This can apply to rental projects as well as for sale. I should have mentioned that at the beginning. Inclusionary housing programs in Colorado can't apply to rental due to state legislature, judicial decisions.
Right, and if I could step in, it depends in part on the community's approach. We do have different municipalities in the state of Colorado interpreting the landscape differently. We have the city of Boulder that does apply IHO to rental situations. We have the city of Denver that we're working with very closely that has chosen not to. So you have both examples, and you can go either direction, but certainly it's more conservative, and most communities are citing on the fact that IHOs should apply to ownership and not rental because of the state court, state Supreme Court decision involving the town of Telluride. Some people refer to it as the Telluride decision, if we want to get into the jargon of the whole business. What is that case referring to? The state of Colorado does not allow rent control. That statute was adopted back in the 70s, way back, and the state Supreme Court interpreted some of the legislation coming out of, or some of the municipal ordinances coming out of the town of Telluride as equivalent to rent control, which those of us in the field question how they made that leap. They did, and so it, they just, these types of programs, most cities do not allow it to apply to rental situations.
So the first two, we're assuming they wouldn't be applied to rental unless you were wanting to try to go along the path to figure out how that would work for rental. As we mentioned, Boulder does have that requirement for rental, and they've been able to find a workaround, so it is possible. So annexation, as I mentioned, could apply to both, and there isn't very much, there isn't a burden, or a barrier to applying it to both. Variable is the requirement for commercial industrial projects based on employee generation. So you could apply not only to residential annexations, but also commercial industrial annexations, using some employee generation rates to develop sort of a correlation between the amount of housing demand they generate. The benefits, it generates affordable units. The negatives, it disincentivizes annexation, and it's, and the development of vacant land to higher intensity uses on the edge of the city. And it may reduce the amount of land that could be used for housing ultimately for the city if it's a barrier to development in those annexation areas. So yield, there's about 970 vacant acres that are within your planning area that aren't annexed, so that's sort of the yield. Based on current designations of residential land uses in your existing comp plan, it would generate about 150 units if all of those projects came forward. So the location, where would these occur? It's scattered. It's on the edges of the city and along the corridor where there's some sort of infill pockets of unincorporated Boulder County. Correlation, it's an offset to the impact to the city from annexation, so the benefit of coming into the city is returned by providing affordable housing. And then the impact on the market, I've already touched on those two points. Lastly, is the idea of rezonings. And so the concept here is you could require 10% of new units or an employee generation equivalency for the rezoning of a parcel, and we believe this can apply fairly easily to rental projects as well. Variables, you could apply it only to rezoning of certain zone districts or land use designation, so if you, you could only apply it to employment land zoning, so if somebody comes in and wants to rezone employment to residential, it could trigger an affordable housing requirement, and all other rezonings wouldn't be subject to it. an affordable housing requirement and all other rezonings wouldn't be subject to it. And then benefits, it generates affordable housing, it generates a community benefit when losing valuable employment land, for instance. Negatives or impacts, it may decrease development activity. So potentially yield based on rezoning. So applying this kind of universally, there's 2,600 vacant acres within the city and so any of those potentially could be rezoned. So that is the yield. So there's a lot of yield there potentially. The locations are scattered. There's a lot of potential within employment areas and regional centers where there's more kind of vacant land that can be developed as opposed to sort of the neighborhood areas of the city. Correlation, it potentially places affordable housing near jobs if you specifically tie it to employment conversion to residential. Impacts, it may increase, decrease development activity, may decrease land for housing development. So as I mentioned, there's, there's one way to, there's to tailor this rezoning approach. And one way that we think has some potential nexus and legs to affordable housing in the comp plan is the idea of rezoning employment lands, uses to residential. Through the work in the comprehensive plan, we've kind of figured out that there is, there is some excess capacity in employment land, employment designated land within the city that could be converted over to housing. And so while employment land for primary employment is sort of a valuable resource for the community, there is the potential to convert some of it. And so one way to sort of get a return benefit out of losing that primary employment land would be to require affordable housing if it does convert over to residential. And so this map kind of illustrates areas where that would more likely happen based on the land use designations that are being considered in the comp plan.
So a couple more slides here. Ultimately, there's a hybrid approach. A mixture of options presented could be considered. There's the inclusionary housing within corridors, nodes and regional centers. Basically, what that's all about is introducing the idea of geographic sensitivity. Does an inclusionary housing ordinance make sense for the entire city? Maybe not. Does it make sense for certain portions of the city, looking at down the development pipeline? Perhaps. The rezoning, whether that's rezoning employment or rezoning residential as part of the comp plan, and just to underscore, it was again mentioned in the, in the community input and also tonight, the timing of this analysis with the comp plan is really good. Most communities can't get that organized. So the fact is, is that whether it's the land supply and changing comp plan designations such that there will be rezonings that will follow and then setting up policy now to anticipate those kinds of regulatory changes, you know, it just is, it's a great sequence. And you can see on the slide here, two, two options on terms of rezoning. Annexations, a clear principle that everyone knows when they come knocking on the door for annexation, what's involved. And, you know, that, just a consistent application so everyone gets it could be a good, good option to pursue. Conversions of rental to condo, touched on that earlier, how do you preserve the rental stock as much as possible? And then housing price, looking at housing prices as an indication of market pressure and applying policy where the market has the greatest amount of pressure. I think generally, part of the goal is to disperse the challenge across as many sectors as possible. I think that one of the challenges that we deal with specifically in the state of Colorado is how to do that across different land uses and different tenure, rental and owner. And how do you get everyone engaged to disperse the overall challenge? Some additional considerations. We're going to talk specifically about incentives. And we think that in the case of Longmont, incentives need to take the approach of a financial contribution. Policy incentives alone are not going to be adequate, is what our supposition is, based on the market, based on our engagement with developers and based on our general understanding of pro forma and development feasibility. In other words, let's jump to the next slide if you don't mind. We've got two examples of incentives here on this slide, policy-based and monetary-based. Policy would, as you see there, fee waivers or reductions, density bonus, height bonus, fast track permitting, every community has that. Not much value in terms of the ability of a developer to monetize that incentive. Parking reductions, again, could a developer reduce parking beyond what the market would allow? That's one generally that's hard to monetize. Height waivers, that's one that the market could monetize if you want to go down that road. Different types of policy-based incentives will have different impact on a pro forma. What will have a very consistent impact on a pro forma is a financial contribution. And you've set aside some funds from the general fund and excellent first step. And what would that look like to apply those funds to, to developers to make the incentives have some teeth and start to make it more of a partnership? Generally, cities that can rely on partners to do things more efficiently than they do them do well. And very few cities have arms that actually go out and construct real estate. But to the extent you can utilize the development community to do the construction and come alongside and partner with them financially so that the pro formas generally pencil, not, I mean, there will be some pain that is distributed, but it's a partnership. The goal is to help reduce the cost to developers as part of the implementation of an IHO. The other thing, actually, I think we've covered all the different points here. So the question is, and this gets back to an incremental approach to developing policy, does that spark your interest in terms of a path that the city may want to go down? And generally, we can build pro forma, what we've done in other, in other communities is actually build pro formas that are calibrated to the local market. And we work backwards and forwards to understand what types of density, what types of incentives actually are meaningful. And in some communities, they just aren't. I mean, Portland had a whole swath of incentives that actually had no impact on a pro forma whatsoever. And they're in the process of eliminating most of those right now and expanding the ones that do. And so we can do that additional detail if there's interested in that kind of calibration. Also, we can pursue some other things like annexation policy. That's among the options we have outlined tonight. That probably is among the lower hanging fruit. So we have probably spoken long enough and are here to answer questions that you might have and hopefully advance the discussion. So thank you very much. Oh, please.
So just to summarize, we're advocating that if you were to go along the lines of targeted inclusionary housing approach, that incentives must play a part in that. And so we were always considering doing a full analysis on your incentives. And so we wanted to bring to you first the targeted IHO to first decide if, direction on that, so we know how to tailor the incentives based on if there is a program or if there isn't. Because our next step is to come back to you with ways to just provide incentives that will have monetary value to the development community. And so we wanted to make sure that was, we understood what your direction was on the targeted IHO before we did that, completed that analysis. And so that's underway, but we're waiting for a direction.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you for a very, very thoughtful and very thorough layout of what, what steps we can take to improve the affordable housing in Longmont. I have many, many questions, but my first one would be, since you just mentioned Portland, which we're nothing like, but just for curiosity's sake, what did work in Portland?
Floor area ratios, increasing the floor area ratios and increasing height. Those two were the most, the ones that ultimately had the most traction with developers. Oh, absolutely, sorry. A floor area ratio is the amount of development rights that a city will apportion to a given site and it's measured as a ratio to the site area. So if you have a one-to-one FAR, floor area ratio, you can build as much floor area inside a building as you have lot area. Two-to-one would be double the lot, three-to-one, triple the lot size. Yes.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. My stomach's turning. I got a knot in my stomach because I have, well done, but that was painful to listen to, and here's why. Let me preface this by, I dreaded tonight's discussion because it's campaign season and council has been relatively civil over the last four years, but this atmosphere politically in our community as well as these particular topics, you know, construction defect as well as affordable housing is perfectly construed to draw us to the, to the edges of our political spectrum. The, I heard a quote this week that, it says capitalism and socialism go hand in hand and you can't have one without the other because capitalism without socialism is fascism and socialism without capitalism is communism. And before I say what I'm going to say, I want people to understand that I think we need a balance, okay? But I'm a little frustrated because we're talking about this again. My understanding was, at least my, I don't want any mandates. And what I saw, and I thought we voted and I thought we instructed city council and our beloved consultants to say, we want incentives, we don't want mandates. And all four, economic approach, annexations, rezonings, and the other one, oh, centers and corridors, you might call it a hybrid, but it really is a mandate. And the one thing, keeping in mind what I said about the balance, you cannot have social programs without economic development. And so there were some accusations levied against council and I was one of them. I accepted money from the developers, but the developers earn nothing if there is no development, which means that if we put incentives in place, I feel like I'm in the Twilight Zone, because on one hand, we're having a conversation about affordable housing, but we're talking about the very things that will make it so developers don't want to build, therefore decreasing supply, just jacking up rents. So what we're going to do is artificially impose, anyway, it just, it just seems all topsy-turvy to me. And I thought we already had the conversation that we weren't going to do this. So I'm a little frustrated. It's almost like we made a decision and now we're coming back. So that's, that's my first thought. I think we need to do something about affordable housing. We need to get the money from somewhere. But I don't think going towards forcing our potential developers regardless of the reason and saying, you're going to give us 10% of your, your funds in order to fund affordable housing is the answer. Because we saw that over the last 10 years and we didn't have any high-density residential. We got, you know, quite frankly, mediocre development projects and I don't want to go back to that. I want to provide affordable housing. I want to figure it out, but I don't want to go back to where we were four years ago. That's what I'm thinking. Now, what the solution is, don't know, but that's my thought.
You know, one thing that you said that kind of really resonated, you talked about partners with the city, partners with the developer so that their projects still pencil out, so that it's a win-win. The developer still builds his unit, but there's some offset, maybe this offset comes from our, you know, revolving million-dollar fund so that there is this gray area where projects still get built and, you know, you kind of thread the needle where everybody wins. You know, obviously, nobody wants to go back to where nobody was going to build anything in Longmont because, you know, I had a lady call me in tears, someone bought her rental unit, new owner, and, you know, trying to raise her rates from 795 to 1195, just like that, you know? And, you know, the, the way we stop that is we increase supply of apartments. I mean, that's what's killing us right now, is just there's no supply. But if we increase supply, but, you know, also, I do think that there is room for public-private partnership and I think we should still try to explore those types of solutions also. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would agree with both of you and Councilmember Bagley about the comments that you've made. I do feel like we're back in the Twilight Zone. And, you know, what I'm, sorry, my screen just went blank, looking at is more of the incentives, but, you know, we have set aside $500,000 for this year, 2016. Hopefully, you know, we can't foresee the future in 2016, but hopefully in the budget 2017, there will be more to that, as was made in public and invited to be heard. And I have no problem with the partnerships. You know, if they, you know, do we have a, would we have a box to check when something comes through and says, you know, we have X amount of dollars, would you be willing to do 5% or whatever, whatever percentage would be affordable? And, excuse me, pardon me. What would be, what percentage of that or what amount would the city be able to contribute out of the Affordable Housing Fund? I hear targeted inclusionary zoning, I think projects. I think Chicago. I know that's not what you're intending, but that's what comes to mind. That we're going to have designated areas that are going to be low, you know, potentially low income or below a certain amount that is going to be a project. And I don't want projects in Longmont. In fact, I remember right before I ran the first time, I talked to Councilmember Doug Brown and he says, you know, what we don't want is, we want things spread out through the city. And he and I had a discussion back and forth over the 10%, but we don't want, we don't want it in one location. So the blend of, I'm not for mandates, I will say, I, I am one of the, the only council members to vote against, to vote for the repeal of the inclusionary zoning ordinance and I'm not going to go back to that because I've seen what that actually did to Longmont. The flood did exacerbate some of our, our rents and affordability, but before the flood, we were having that problem because nothing was being built prior to the repeal of the inclusionary zoning ordinance. So if there's a way to do some sort of, if something's coming in to, if a project's coming in to, we take the initial step of saying, would you consider putting in some affordable units? What type of participation would the city need to do to go that route? And do we have those funds in the affordable housing, in the Affordable Housing Fund? Other than that, I mean, we're, you know, I think what Councilmember Bagley said is correct. We've gone back. I believe that there was at least a majority of council that said that mandates just were not, I could be wrong. But for me, mandates are not the way to go. So, and as the mayor said, you build supply, the idea is, and the theory is, things will go down. Now, it's also been mentioned that we have folks coming in from out of state that have, are getting in line for some of our units, whether they're affordable or not. In the past, whether they were in the inclusionary zoning ordinance, that we couldn't even help those in Boulder County. We had to accept whoever came through the door, whether they were from Texas, California or from wherever. You know, I'm looking to see what can we do to help the residents of Longmont and then, secondly, what can we do to help the Boulder County? And also, I've said it again, what are the other cities doing besides, we're going to be helping fund the study as far as their own affordable housing dilemmas? Seems like everyone is looking at Longmont to do everything and that's not right.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So there are two parts of this Longmont supporting, things that I could get behind. One of them is height. Height and floor area ratios increases so that we could get more housing built in these areas. And at the same time, increase the funding into that Affordable Housing Fund. I think that would make that work. And just, and also just to point out- And just, and also just to point out, Longmont Housing Authority is building three projects in the next couple of years. Spring Creek is going to open in September 2016, Christmas Apartments, June 2017, Fall River Apartments, October of 2017. They're doing multiple projects all at the same time, it's never been done before in Longmont or by the Housing Authority. And they're doing that through other types of financing, one of them being, you know, tax credits, there's other ways to get that housing for that end of the spectrum. They are doing a very good job of providing supply of housing. And I think it was in the 300-unit range, something like that, that it's going to come on board in the next couple of years. What I think I've also heard from the development community is that they're concerned about the rate of building right now, and they don't want to be caught, they want to see the absorption rate of the existing new housing stock coming online before they really jump into the pool again. So that's also going to drive what happens in Longmont. So like I said, I could get behind the height and the floor area ratios with Longmont supporting that through the Affordable Housing Fund, basically buying doors, but at a cost, the last current cost I heard is about $220,000 per door for apartment building. So you can get, if you fund it $500,000, we'll get two units a year, basically, so.
Well, that's, can I interject on that?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
So in our analysis, we're running numbers right around just slightly over $200,000. So $225 is in the ballpark. And I think the challenge is, how do you increase inventory in a way that the city isn't paying the freight, the full freight, but it's this partnership where you get enough revenue from a deal that you have enough dispers, dispersion of development costs over a broad number of units that you can include some and still make it work?
I get that, but I think the city, I'm for the city participating in that with monetary support. And I think that's one of the ways we get it done. City manager and I met with a developer, what, last spring? And they said, it's just an arithmetic question, how much, this is what it takes to build and this is how much it would take to participate. So I do think there's a way to get it done, I just think we need to have the will and the money behind it to actually make something happen. And there's also the concern then, at what point do we have, with the land supply diminishing and the population increasing, we end up with that cost of land going up and that's all going to factor into all this stuff in the longer term too. At what point does, you know, Longmont become unaffordable like Boulder is, so, I mean, it's inevitable.
Mayor, if I can jump in real quick? I think one of the questions of why it looks familiar is, when we had the last conversation with council, part of the motion was, we talked about the targeted inclusionary zoning at a high level, and part of the motion was, what would it look like? And so that's really the aspect of the motion that we're bringing back is, what would it look like? Here's what it would look like.
We never talked about this.
We asked them to bring it up.
Ever talk about this in that motion, ever.
It was our understanding that the council was interested in understanding what it looks like to have a more refined, geographically targeted IHO. I mean, and what we did, I just put this slide back up there, and perhaps we were mistaken in terms of what we took away from the meeting, but we did think that the council and the community wanted to hear, explore potential targeted inclusionary approaches.
All right. Councilmember Christiansen, could you turn yours off because you've already spoken and then you can fall in again? Councilmember Levison.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. You know, I am interested in as much as we can throw into the blender and turn it on and see what comes up. I mean, I think it's going to have to be a blended approach because there is no silver bullet, because if there was for Longmont, we would have already discovered it. So I'm also, I've also done just a little bit of reading. Jersey City, New Jersey, has looked at a geographic-based incentive program, looking at some of those capacity issues that you've talked about in the economic and geographic sections of the approaches. So I would like to take a look at dividing the city up into a certain number of geographic zones and looking at where there is need for housing. Because the other part of the affordable housing issue is the social issue and the social fabric of the community. We do not want to create areas of the city where we're incenting all the affordable housing to be. Because, you know, there's got to be, you can't just make an assumption that people will only want to live in that part of the city and that regardless, we're not going to have any other kind of economic levels in any parts of this, any other parts of the city. It becomes economic segregation. And if we're looking at providing and having broad services to the entire community, people that are of lower income, that are more transit-dependent, can support with ridership routes for RTD where they could eliminate routes throughout the city because they're only going to go to the areas where they have the most ridership. So we'll never get a better transit system within the city if we just target certain areas. The other thing I would really like to have an assessment on is, within those corridors and employment cores, to really look at, within a quarter of a mile, what already exists as far as rental costs and housing costs. So when I look at Main Street in the corridor up and down, I don't see that within a quarter of a mile, we've got, with maybe some exceptions, very, very high-cost housing. We've got, all the way up and down Main Street, we have adjacent, within a quarter of a mile, trailer parks, which are extremely affordable housing, and we also have along corridors, very small houses on very small lots. And those are great houses for seniors to retire in, and they're great houses for families starting out in, or families that want to stay there and just, you know, smush together more. It's still affordable for people. So I would hate to think that we were going to take a broad stroke and say, all those assets we have already in the community, we can't rebuild a thousand-square-foot house on a tiny lot for the value it currently has in the community. So I want to make sure that we're not going to take something that's currently affordable, wipe it off, and put in something that's going to cost a lot more and not yet be affordable, if you can understand that. You know, I would like to look at the floor area, I always thought floor area ratio stuff made sense, and I also think that there has been a lot of great housing built where there might be a multi-story building and the affordable units might be in the places on each floor that are not the most great views, for example. And they don't have to be built with granite countertops, you can build units very modestly at a lower cost than the rest of the development. And I think that that's, you know, that's absolutely key. Just the finishes alone, they can be great finishes, they don't have to be granite countertops. They can be vermicat, I mean, a lot of that can save thousands of dollars on cost. And still, you, what you're doing is, you're really buying for the affordable units, the location, proximity to transit, and community amenities. And I think that those can be accomplished at a good price point. And I, and I agree that we should do some incentives, but if people are wanting to come into the city and we know with the geographic distribution of what we have for housing, that we do need housing at a better price point, I don't think it's unheard of to ask somebody and then have incentives to back up them constructing a couple of units. I guess my last question is, you know, if the whole idea is this trickle-up theory, if we had 10,000 units of housing, we could plop down in five years, rental housing, it's going to be built at whatever the market will bear. And until we get a glut of rental housing, prices aren't going to go down. So I think eventually, we're going to hit, we're kind of doing this boom and bust rollercoaster. And Colorado's always had the boom and bust, and eventually, you know, we're going to get to a bust and things are going to drop again. I think the last thing Councilmember Moore's point about land banking, I think we should be finding places that we know we need some housing and buy up some land. Because then that's a great incentive to work with a housing partner. If we can provide land and we have a developer who wants to make a profit and wants to partner with us to build affordable units, then the land really becomes an asset that, with the increasing cost of land, they don't have to worry about investing in the land. And that gets us a long way to building resources, you know? And I know the realty, the Realtor organization, you know, the motto of the National Organization of Realtors is, you know, you know, everything is the land. So I think we have to look at that as a finite resource in town and see what we can do.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I agree with all my councilmembers that have spoken before me, with just a few exceptions. I am kind of disappointed that we haven't heard any ideas about tiny houses or land, land codes that would, or, you know, or development codes that would help us perhaps have a different type of community with smaller streets or a mobile home park or those kind of things that are affordable. I haven't heard anything about that, and I, that's one of the things I remember us talking about, so I'm a little, I'm a little surprised about that. Floor ratio areas, or floor area ratios makes sense to me, height exceptions makes sense to me, public-private partnerships makes sense to me. Once again, Councilmember Bagley said he didn't remember us saying anything about inclusionary zoning. It had a terrible effect on our community before, and as Councilmember Santos said, we had people all over the country moving here, and we can't help our own people, which is a concern as well. So I think that's what we need to look at. I like the box idea of checking when you go in for a development application, would you be interested in a public-private partnership for a certain percentage affordable? I think that's a great idea. That's a carrot, that's not a stick. Carrots always work better than sticks.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Well, I, I agree with Councilwoman Bagley, we don't need, we need balance, but I don't see any mandates here, actually. I see that you have come back and given us the choices we asked for, which was to explore the inclusionary housing and what that might mean. In each case, when we talk about incentives, these are largely, what we should mean, mind, keep in mind is that incentive actually means taxpayer subsidies. So we're willing to do that, and developers need to be willing to do something to do their part, because this is a community problem. It's, I like the idea that we need to have things by employment areas, but we need better jobs and we need much more jobs. We had, last year, we had a net gain of 27 jobs for a town of 91,000, according to Mr. Golden's report, and this year, we have a net loss of 379 so far. I hope that will improve. So we have to do a better job because the main reason these are not affordable is we don't have good jobs and we don't have enough jobs. So I think that what we're mistaking here for mandates are, in the past discussion of inclusionary housing, is we had an economic meltdown starting from 2007, and we're just recovering from it now. So that's, if you, if you look at the data from the Dr. Coggs study of Denver housing, it follows, it sunk, and then it is coming back. And it's coming back for all units, for both condos and for single-family homes. So we're recovering from that. So I, I don't think we should get stuck talking about something that happened, you know, eight years ago. When Councilwoman Finley was talking about this, I, I think that we should keep in mind, in the 1940s, we built Old Town, and that was, actually won awards for planning. And the idea was, we were creating neighborhoods, and we created some wonderful neighborhoods. We did this by offsetting the streets every couple of blocks so that at the end of every two blocks, there would be a house and a house, and we'd create a neighborhood. And it would also cut down on people zooming through, through neighborhoods. So we created, we were, we were an award-winning, nationally award-winning town for creative solutions to planning, and we can do that again. Aaron Fosdick is a very strong proponent of the 20-minute neighborhood, which I think a lot of people understand in the Envision Plan, which means that you can walk to places. You can walk to services and things that, that creates a mixed-use neighborhood, which is what I think we're talking about a lot. I think what people love about Longmont is the neighborhoods, and I think we can do a creative job of having, say, reducing some of our codes so we could build a smaller house, maybe 500 square feet. Originally, when Americans built their houses, they built small houses, and then as their family grew, they added on a chunk, and they added on a chunk, and they added on a chunk. Some of, some people never could afford to add on the chunk, but they had a house, you know? So that's the idea of a shotgun house or a saltbox house. Those kinds of things are what we need for homeownership. There's nothing more important to people actually getting, doing well than homeownership and being able to acquire some equity. Not everybody can do that, but a lot, that's what a lot of people want. And I think we can do that with, you know, create different kinds of things, like change our codes so we can build smaller houses like that, that people can expand. Think about the 20-minute neighborhood, a lot of people build the jobs first, and then they build, it's all planned to begin with, but they first get the employers and then, and the employment, the industrial or light industrial setup, and then they have the, then they start building homes when they get the tax base from that. And that's another way of looking forward. We also used to have other choices like boarding houses. Why don't we build some boarding houses? That's what the YMCA used to do. People could come and they could get a room and they could sleep and they were, they had a roof over their head, for the really low-end people. There are all kinds of choices, but I don't think that was what you were tasked with. You were tasked, I think that's what we need to, to task ourselves with is creative solutions like that, and there are a lot of them. But I, I think that all of the things that I think we have, as Mr. Petro said, a big toolbox here of things we could, we could pick and choose from and keep as many of them as possible because we don't know what's going to happen 10 years down the line. But we do need to, as, as Councilwoman Moore said, to figure out what the absorption rate is going to be. We're building a lot of places right now, and a lot of it, developers are rightly concerned about whether they're going to be able to sell the stuff that they're, that we're building. So that and land banking are very big considerations about, about the future. Anyway, I think that's all I have to say right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just having a chance to digest, part of my frustration that I expressed earlier is, I blame you two for doing such a good job last time. Because I had two insights, okay? I love insights. And you guys, the teachers, you've forgotten more about this than I'll ever learn, but I had two insights. When you talked about, like, Aspen, I literally thought of you two when I was in Aspen at a wedding last month. Walking around town, there's a two-bedroom apartment for sale for like $3.9 million, and I'm like, whoa, you know? And driving up there, you go in the back way, it's dark and, you know, cliffs off to the side, and then all of a sudden, bam, you arrive to Aspen and there you are, right? They're surrounded by mountains and everybody wants to live there, and therefore, they're willing to do anything and pay any price and work three jobs just to live in Aspen. The problem is, we're not Aspen. One of the insights you gave me, or gave us, at least I think, was, you know, when you have a high demand for an area, it's more likely that you can say, give us your money if you want to develop here, because there's really no other option. Whereas in Longmont... Whereas in Longmont, as much as we love Longmont, people can build 100 yards and they're in Firestone, and they're just as happy. They can go to Bertha, Mead, Lyons, you know? We have options, you know? We're not the only girl at the dance. We're trying to get pretty, but we're not quite there yet. And then the other insight was your definition of inclusionary zoning. I think that the problem we had before was, the definition of inclusionary zoning, based on your first presentation, which then made me go out and read all about inclusionary zoning, most of the articles I found nationally referred to the fact that inclusionary zoning was not a gun to the developer's forehead saying, give us 10%. It was, there are other things that you can do in order to invite and encourage development. And that's when the whole, I mean, I once had a teacher that said, you can put anything into a two-by-two, two-by-two matrix. On one hand, you got demand, and then down here, you've got the degrees of incentives. And, you know, you cannot, if you don't have high demand to live in a city, you can't force people to give you money. Whereas if you have a lot of demand to live in the city, you can force them to give you a lot of money if they want to develop. So what, when I, when I passed the motion, I believe it was my motion, when we said no incentives, or no mandates, but incentives and targeting, so I have no problem with annexations, no problem with rezonings, no problem with centers and corridors, but my thought was that we were going to look at square footage bonuses, density bonuses, other areas of our city where we could say, hey, look, this particular area, we're going to allow you to build multiple stories. Or in this particular area, we're going to allow a bigger footprint. I don't think land banking is such a bad idea. But that was my understanding of target the areas of where we can do things and then create the incentives. And so that way, you know, developers, we can truly work together. If they want to build more, they can, we're not forcing them to. But at the other hand, we've already looked at certain areas of the city where if somebody wants to build a five-story apartment building, we're like, yeah, but we, we've looked at it, people aren't going to get upset. Because it's an area of town where you're not blocking views, or, or just, you know, rocking the boat, so to speak. So that's what I was, that's what I was expecting, at least when I made the motion, that we would have targeted areas that we look at, but that we would be looking at incentive-based programs so that people don't stop building here and just say, ah, screw it, I'm moving to Firestone, or I'm going to go build somewhere else. Because on one hand, we need to have the economic growth and development, but on the other hand, we also need to come up with a solution to affordable housing. And I think that if we go back to truly what you're suggesting here, or not suggesting, but what do you, throwing it out there to see what we say, if we, if we go that route, we're back into a situation where we'll never have the opportunity to work with developers because I, I don't, I don't, I don't think they're going to be interested in building. So that's what I'd like to see. You coming back with that targeted approach, but with only the incentive-based options so that we don't get into a community fight again over, you know, the developers are evil, the people who need affordable housing are freeloaders. We, we can just figure out a solution to fund that fund, work with Longmont Housing Authority, and just fix it. So that's my two cents.
Yeah, yeah. You know, I think because, I hate to throw out a possible tool, and I think perhaps targeted inclusionary zoning, which is where you have a public-private partnership, where it still works for both parties, that's, that's, you know, very simple, there's clarity to it, and everybody knows that infill developments cost a lot more money. So, but that's where we want to build these affordable housing units, you know, in downtowns where it's walkable. And so, but in order to get that, everybody has to win. So you have to have, you know, something that's fair to all parties. And so I don't want to throw out targeted inclusionary zoning that includes some sort of public-private partnership where we're funding a little bit so that it pencils out. Because nobody's going to come in, I mean, obviously, it doesn't do us any good to have targeted inclusionary zoning where no developer's going to build anything, because then everybody loses. So I, I think that that's still one of the toolboxes that I'm kind of interested in, at least pursuing. I'm not saying that I'm for it, but I think, you know, at this point, I don't want to throw that out at this point, because I think there's, there might be a way to make that work where everybody can benefit.
Councilmember Levinson.
I think one thing that really is a goal for me is something that, that I heard in Councilmember Santos's comment about, you know, not having these, like, 20-story apartment building projects like Cabrini-Greens. By the way, they have, they have torn down Cabrini-Greens, and I have actually, with my own eyes, seen what has gone in its place. It is mixed income, like four and five units together, two and three stories, very walkable, and, and really, there is room for many different income levels within that area of Chicago now. Although there's increasing pressure for gentrification now that the neighborhood's better, other people want to pay more money to live there. And it's got to be a kind of a delicate balance. I don't, I don't think that any of us want to say, well, we're going to segregate people by income. It's not great for the city. It's not great, I mean, we, we know what, how influence it can have on schools, where you have kids in a school with a lot of different incomes, everyone does better. The kids who come from wealthier families do better, the kids that come from the lowest-income families do better. And I want to make sure we have balance in our neighborhood schools, and that, you know, kids have economic, I mean, kids have opportunities to, to meet people from different backgrounds. And I think if we look at not having incentives based on where we need some less expensive housing in certain areas of the city, we're not going to do that. And I don't think people will have as much opportunity. And Longmont frankly has been really, our DNA is opportunities for families of all types. The one thing I don't want to really go down the path of is, when we talk about tiny houses, we actually have, I mean, 500-square-foot houses already in Longmont. And again, if you're looking at pulling a little house up on a piece of property, it's not the house itself that's going to cost you money, it's going to be the water and sewer hookup and all that. And that's just a basic cost. You can't do it for less money sometimes. If it's infill, certainly I think it's less money than building from scratch. But again, I think we need to flesh out, if we don't have a lot of options, we don't have a lot of opportunities to blend and mix. It's a one-size-fits-all. And I think we need to keep many sizes fitting many people and projects.
Okay, I don't see any further discussions, so.
Any thoughts on the easements? The affordable housing easement was proposed.
I, I think affordable housing easements are an idea just like, it's akin to conservation easements that we've used with, you know, private landowners. So you buy up, basically, you're filling the gap between their potential development income and keeping a conservation easement for open space for agricultural uses. So it's really no different than what we're doing now. And I think that making some targeted investments in that area is a good idea, too. Again, it's part of a whole portfolio of things.
Councilmember Christensen.
I think that the easements are a very good idea. It keeps us from having to start all over again when things go out of affordability. It also helps keep away a huge amount of gentrification. I think that's a huge problem. I've been the victim of that when I had a two-year-old child and had to move. My friend who lives in Island Park in Denver is being forced out of her neighborhood, and my parents have the same problem. It, if you keep, you know, if you, if you build lots of places, it doesn't necessarily make for lower rents. It just means that the rents go up. And unless there, unless there's some kind of affordability component, then it just creates gentrification. And, and that's also a problem with businesses, too. There are a lot of people, a lot of little businesses down by the, on the St. Frain River who, they rent space down there. And it's very inexpensive. And they can have little, little shops and make a living doing that. Their land will be, I don't, I hate to see them forced out by us turning what is essentially low-cost business areas into high-cost business areas. That's something I think we ought to remember.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So to answer your question, so, yeah, I think, I think the affordable, affordability easement, great idea, so long is it's a bargain for exchange. Meaning if you're going to a, a person who owns property, and you say, we would like to put an easement on your property either to acquire affordable housing, or to continue the current, you know, if you've got a 20-year, you know, cap on it. If we are going to extend it, or if we're going to renew it, as long as there's a meeting of the minds where two people, property owner and city, come together and say, we want to, you know, reimburse you in order to do that, and they agree, great. I think that the same thing with even requiring, you know, if we were going to convert condos, or someone's going to buy rental projects or whatever, you know, even a requirement that says, before someone buys, you know, a right of first refusal gets kicked over to the city, I think that's okay. Because if anything, that's going to enhance the sale price. You know, now it's an automatic city entity that's in, at the bargaining table. You know, as a property owner, I'd love that. You know, great, you want to pay me $500,000? Let me see if the city will give me $550,000. I mean, that, that strikes me as a fair process. I would not be for banning condo conversions because, I mean, not contrary to popular belief, not everybody who's going to build a development or purchase a condo building or apartment building are rich. Maybe that's, I mean, I do divorces all the time, and there's middle-class Americans who have apartment units, that that was their retirement. And so all of a sudden saying, you know what, we are not going to allow you to convert your apartments into condos, I mean, that could destroy a family, you know, and hurt the very people we're trying to help. So, so yes to afford, me, one of seven, I would say yes to affordability easements, yes to a right of first refusal, as long as it's not forced and it's a meeting of the minds, and no to condo conversions, a flat-out ban unless there was some type of, again, way of finding a meeting of the minds and making it fair to, to both parties.
Councilmember Levinson.
So going one further on the affordable housing easement, I would also like to see that coupled with a targeted incentive program. If someone says, okay, you know, I want to, I want to sell this, and I have a higher bidder who's going to either want to knock it down and build it up again, or I want to sell it now because I think I can get the best and highest price, but it needs a lot of work. Well, I think that you could look at finding the sweet spot with doing the incentive on the easement, and also making an agreement to use monetary incentives to help, you know, if, if there's a major sewer line failure, or if there's electrical upgrades, to do the health and safety upgrades that would be necessary to make, again, that investment then, for the next 20 years, really pay off for the city. And then that's another economic incentive that the owner has to say, well, maybe in consideration of a slightly lower price, I know that the city's going to come in and help rehab the units. And that will really help them with what they're going to charge for rent at the affordable level. And I think that as far as the condo conversion, again, you could, you could use the incentive, you know, some maybe exterior improvements kick in on a condo conversion to say, well, if, if you will keep a certain level of affordability of a certain number of units, then we're willing to partner with you to keep those units upgraded. Or I think that the other part of the incentive approach to be looked at is, when you're looking, when you have HOA situations, a lot of people cannot afford increasing HOA fees and assessments. And then you have to maybe see whether or not, again, there's a little program that you can create to help mitigate the effects of higher and escalating HO fees, HOA fees and assessments.
Councilmember Christensen.
I agree with Councilman Bagley about banning, for the banning condo conversions completely because it just seems wrong, you know? Plus, if you're talking about construction defects or something like that, those, those units have already proven to be pretty sturdy, so then you don't have that problem. But I, I do think, though, that it would be good to highly incentivize people to make a certain percentage of them permanently affordable if they are converted. Or at least, you know, highly incentivize them to do that. Because the effect of converting apartments into condos, it, it is a big economic impact on a community, especially lower-income people. And the developer needs to take some responsibility for that, the effect of that. And so, but banning, banning them outright seems like, well, it, it just doesn't seem very, it's not the direction we should go, you know? It's their property, and ultimately, that's, doesn't seem very right, very right to me. Thank you.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So, yeah, to answer your question, I guess I overlooked it when we had, when I made my comments earlier. I would, I think it's a good idea if we can get, it has to be back to that agreement, though, that it works for everybody. Bottom line is, though, it still takes either direct funds from the city, or loss of revenue from the city to make these happen. So in any case, we're having to raise more money again, and we're back to the same issue. It's about the money. How are we going to raise a million dollars a year? Right now, we've done a first step, that's, I'd support keeping that going, but, you know, I think if there's enough money at the table, I think that we can get participation and get the kind of housing we need in Longmont.
Okay. Do you think you have enough direction now?
So, Councilmember, I, I am really afraid to summarize anything after.
Yeah.
My, my.
It's, I, I do, too.
Very afraid, yes. Councilmember Moore, on the rental conversions, is that what your last comments were about, or was that about the easements? The volunteer, okay. So what about rental conversions, in your opinion? Okay. And then, I don't think we've heard from you three on those two.
Yeah. I'm not in favor of banning conversions of rentals to condominiums, because I, I agree with Brian Bagley on that, that it's, you know, people's property without, you know, paying, you know, some sort of incentive so that that owner is, you know, made whole again some way. It's just, it seems like an overreach to me.
So if I can kind of summarize these point by point, as I think I understand it from the conversation. So, when we look at the, the easement perspective, what I heard was that council's good with looking at the easement. You didn't go into the specific portions of the easement, but I'm going to make an assumption here that fee reductions, waiver rebates, and, and payment are all options that we could look at in terms of developing those affordable housing easements, correct?
Uh huh.
Okay. When we look at preserving and increasing affordability, didn't hear any support for the banning of the, of conversions, but what I did hear is definitely looking at developing the first rights of refusal in that process. Then in terms of the, the targeted component, what I thought I heard in the conversation was that take the targeted component, but really look at developing the incentives that go along with the targets. And, and it may be that in some of those targeted areas, based on what we're looking at, those incentives may be more robust in those areas.
I think that's fair.
Is that?
Yes, yeah, that's, that's a great job. I think you got it. Councilmember? No, okay. All right.
So we will, we will bring those back, and we will have, we will go through and look at value, you know, assigning value to those pieces based on, on the direction that we have. We still have another component of this conversation, which, based on the conversation that council had. had last week about updating on the construct, construction defect piece that we have to present. That was the first bullet point on this. And so, if council wants to take a break?
Yes, we do want to take a break.
We can load that on the system.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just for clarification, I can agree to all that, does not necessarily mean that I agree with everything that is, that I will vote for any of those top, those topics.
I was just saying.
No, I understand.
What we're bringing back.
But I'm just being clear. So, you know, things can get printed incorrectly.
Councilmember Levison?
And I think one other point we have to remember is, when we put all this in, in place, the market's gonna determine who wants to use, what's the most attractive, and that's going to just be site-specific, with individual people wanting to do work in the community. So, we can't predict whether or not any of this is gonna work necessarily.
Well, let's, let's have a 10-minute recess, 'cause we've been working since 5:30 nonstop.
You guys did good. I just, I just speak harsh after.
Where's our mayor pro tem?
Sure.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, Sean Lewis, Assistant City Manager. I'm going to kick us off with part two of the first item on your agenda, study session item, and that is a discussion of the construction defect policy. We're going to, I just want to give you an overview of what the presentation will look like tonight so that as we go through it, you know what to expect and when we'll be getting some direction from you in item number four. But we're going to start out with just talking about what the state statute says, what it does, also talk about presentation of staff research. This is the research that we have been doing since you originally directed us to do this. As Kathy and her consultants mentioned, this was discussed back in June when we said we would bring this back with affordable housing. And so we're going to look at two different data points, the condo town home permit data here in town, as also, as well as the developer feedback that we've gotten from a handful of developers. And then we'll also talk about components of other municipal policies, and then again, that direction from you all as council. So if we can't start with the construction defect law background, this law actually already does provide some notice before commencing lawsuit, a lawsuit. As you can see, there's an opportunity for inspection and cure, which provides builder contractor access to inspect the property within 30 days. They can also offer a settlement or remedy the defect within 30 days. The claimant may accept or reject that within 15 days. And if it's rejected, or no offer is made, the claimant then may sue. And this is for any professional contractor, any builder, or professional working on the project. There's also no negligence claim that is based on building code or industry standards unless there's actual damage. So if there's injury, there's loss, property damage, et cetera, then that can be grounds for suit, but no negligence claims can be based on those. If the notice, if notice of claim is sent within the statute of limitations, the statute of limitations is on hold until completion of the notice of claim process. So basically, at the end of that two-year period, if you file a notice, then the statute of limitations is basically extended until it can be resolved. Next, we want to talk about the other part of this, which is really the HOA laws in Colorado. So you have two different sets of statutes that really, the regulations that you're seeing in some other cities are dealing with or making changes to locally. First of all, generally, the board of association, i.e. the HOA, has the power to act on behalf of the association. So that's a tenant of that law, of course. And the HOA does have the power to sue and be sued. And before commencing construction defect action, state law under this particular act does assert, asserting defects in five or more units is kind of that limit, and the board must provide written notice to each unit, each unit owner. And that notice must include the nature of the action, the relief that's being sought, anticipated expenses and fees that will be incurred in prosecuting that action. So that's, those are really kind of the major tenants of that HOA law. Next, Joni is going to talk to us about some of the permit data and developer interviews.
Mayor Coombs, members of council. Oh, I didn't mean to. Joni Marsh, Planning and Development Services. So we thought we would just take a look and give you some data points so you could get some reference on our permit activity, both townhomes and condos, and then also track that along with single family, just so you could kind of see the trends. This data is really from 1999 going forward to, through this year, through September 30th of this year. As you can see, some of the trend, the trend lines are fairly similar. You would note that the condo, the highest year for condos that we had was actually in 2000 where we had over 600 units built, so the remaining 1,500 units were built from 2001 forward here in the city of Longmont. This trend line also frankly tracks with our overall permit line. So it's, you can see it's pretty cyclical. We had, as I talked earlier at our pre-meeting today, how wouldn't anticipate us getting back to where we were in terms of activity back in 1999 and 2000. And as you look at this, you can see it was a pretty high year for building permits, I think over 900 single-family home permits compared to this year where we're at 159 to date. So tracking much differently in the current economy than we were back in, back in the day, so to speak. One thing I want to point out is when we talk about townhomes and condos, remember, when we talk about those and how we permit them, townhomes actually are platted lots, so you actually buy your lot with your townhome. They're also part of HOA, so that part is the same. Condos, you do not buy the ground. It's an airspace map that's your ownership record. So just, just to be clear, in case there's any misconception about what that is. You know, the other thing that we thought we should ask around is talk to some of our current developers who are building both townhomes and condos. So we have a couple of townhome projects that are currently building. One in particular is Silver Meadows Townhomes, and those are over just west of Silver Creek High School, over off of Nelson Road. And that is Dream Finder Homes. They're a company out of Florida, and they are new to the Colorado market. And they were willing to sit down and kind of talk to us a little bit about what they're seeing in terms of construction defect, how that affects what they do, what they build, their labor issues. You know, pretty consistent feedback in terms of some additional costs in terms of how you build these, really looking at third-party inspections as well. All the folks we talked to are doing those voluntarily as part of their due diligence, so to speak, knowing that there's potential liability down the road. This particular contractor talked a little bit about difficulty in finding subcontractors because the insurance is difficult to come by for subcontractors willing to take on work in some townhome and condo situations. There are some insurance policies that as a contractor you can purchase, they're called RAP policies, and those are, provide additional costs, but they also provide subcontractors with that insurance coverage as well. So your project is overall protected and that you're more likely to get those subcontractors on board with you was their explanation of how they, why they purchase that insurance. You know, we asked a little bit, you know, could you give us just a projection of your time and cost increase? In the last couple bullet points, you'll see that by doing some of the additional building requirements that they feel are necessary to make their product viable up against a defect lawsuit, they felt that they were coming in, you know, $50,000 to $60,000 in hard costs over what they might otherwise come in at for this particular, this particular builder. And again, this is a townhome product, so again, purchasing the lot with your home, but still part of an HOA project. And then the second developer I talked to was with CPM Construction. So Fox Meadows, for those of you who aren't familiar, it's out at Ninth and County Line Road. And right at the corner there, there's several buildings, condo buildings, four condo buildings that were built probably up to around 2007, they were CO'd. This project went back to the bank, has been sitting on the books for a while. So CPM came in and purchased this project, and they actually pulled building permits and are building right now. This builder is a Colorado builder, has built in the Colorado market for a long time, and felt confident that they were familiar enough with what they needed to do on their project by buying RAP insurance, doing third-party inspections. They said that is something they have been doing for 15 years, that's not new to them. They're comfortable with that. I think their threshold of exposure was, they felt secure about doing this type of product. They've done it in Denver. They currently have two other projects in Commerce City that they're working on. And he estimated his costs were in the $10,000 to $15,000 range for additional costs for, for covering what could come out of preparing for any construction defect lawsuit. He has actually been sued before. That lawsuit was unsuccessful. The plaintiff did not win. And then, you know, his, his feedback to me was really talking about making sure there's a stronger right to remedy clause, and also, you know, just understanding that if a lot of communities take this action, there's some potential that maybe the legislature sees that as a sign to continue doing more work in the next session. So that was kind of the general overview we got from a few people. And we have a couple other projects that are on the books now, too, and we have some calls into them to kind of also feel out how they're building, how, what their threshold of tolerance is, and, you know, are their costs in line with some of the things we've heard today?
Councilmember Levinson.
Thank you. Joni, could you go back the previous slide, please? So that last statement, he doesn't believe condos would ever be constructed under 200K in Longmont with or without reform. Does that just mean that even to build 800 square feet, your basic costs of land and everything else, construction costs are, are not going to come in at 50,000 or 100,000? There's just a basic cost per square foot?
Correct.
So even at, like, if you wanted to build a condo that was only 400 square feet, you still have enough basic costs that you can't slice and dice it enough to get something down to $80,000 or something?
So we were, Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Levinson, we were really talking in the, talking about 1,100, 1,200, 1,200 square foot condos, so really looking probably at about all-in costs, maybe 175,000, 175 bucks per square foot. So we didn't talk about the smaller square footage, but yes, I would imagine if you did the math, you would probably find that also not really getting you to a super-low number, but that would be another thing we could vent.
So you're talking about like a two-bedroom, what it would be a two-bedroom unit, perhaps?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Christiansen.
I would like to know what this, one thing that seems to me obvious for, this is just two developers, but it seems that, you know, Colorado people know how to build in Colorado better, and that's kind of the lesson of this. And, and that makes sense because we have all this expansive soil, and that's what really drives the cost of having to build correctly. What does he, what did he mean by a stronger right to remedy clause? What would he change about that?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Christiansen, I think that he was referencing the bill that got killed in the legislature this year and feeling like the language in that wasn't strong enough to give a longer, I think, a longer term to remedy that, or a way for a builder to be able to have more time to, to, to work with homeowners to get those problems cured.
Yeah, that makes sense. The other question I have is, I didn't realize that the inspections are being done by third parties, they're not being done by us locally?
They're being done by both. So both of these folks are hiring third-party inspectors, so we are, the city building inspection staff is inspecting, and they are also at their own volition hiring a third-party inspector to do a double inspection that they do before we come out, so.
Oh, that's good. But it would seem to me that at the heart of a lot of the problems are the fact that our codes may not be strong enough, and our inspections may not be strong enough. Otherwise, why would these things be okayed and then sold and then have problems later? Can you, do you have some comment on that?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Christiansen, so I think for the city of Longmont, we adopt the newest code as it comes out in the cycle, which you'll see in your packet for next week. So I think we are very aggressive in keeping up with code cycles and making sure that we're not only applying the newest code, the best energy code, electric code, but also doing inspections. So I think, I think this is an insurance for those folks who are selling this product that they have that as just another checkbox on their list. I don't think it's a reflection of the city's code cycle or inspection program.
You have to hold your.
Sorry.
I have a quick question. I don't think this could possibly happen in Longmont, but this is what happened to me in Las Vegas, is the condos were built there and they hired a bunch of inspectors that didn't work for the city. And apparently, these were shoddy inspectors, and they built up a whole bunch of ton of condos that were supposed to have firestop drywall between the units, and they built them not to the code, and a lot of these things weren't found out until like seven years later. What would happen, you know, if something like that happened in our state would, under our current laws, would the, you know, if something was actually not built to city code, who would be responsible? The city or the contractor?
Mayor Coombs, so I'm not certain what state statute would require. I mean, certainly, certainly we try to catch those errors. That's why we have multiple inspectors. We don't send the same inspector to every house every time for inspections. And we also have fire inspectors as well to double back on that. So I don't know that the city has a liability, and I don't, I'm not sure how that cycles into the state lawsuit.
Yeah, that's probably a little off.
Eugene might be queuing up.
Mayor and Council Eugene May, City Attorney. Generally, the city would not have liability for inspection. Most of the construction defect ordinances and statutes that we're looking at is if you are in compliance with the building code, that cannot form the basis for a construction defect claim. If you're not in compliance because you didn't build it the way you were supposed to, seems you might have some construction exposure there.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just wanted to know, do we have any data on how many lawsuits were filed against builders in Longmont?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Finley, I'm not aware of any. Certainly, we can see if we could figure that out. Yeah, I'm not familiar with any, any other than the one the gentleman told me about that, but that wasn't Longmont, that was in a project in the metro Denver area.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess I just have a couple questions. The Silver Meadows project, they had to go 20 feet deep around foundations and build floating foundation walls. Is that because of soil conditions or because that's the requirement of how you build houses?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Moore, so largely in Colorado, that, as Councilmember Christiansen points out, is largely due to soils. So they had some very poor soils on that site, and went, went around a couple times trying to overexcavate that site and getting, getting that soil reconditioned and back in. Not uncommon, same with the floating walls. Most of you probably have those in your basement, too. If you looked really close, you'd see them.
No, my, my first house in Longmont I did, but not my current home. And then, oh, what was the second? Oh, just a comment, just a general comment. Inspection is not ever going to be more than maybe 60% effective at catching every defect. So we can't really rely on inspections to make, to satisfy 100% compliance with every single thing that goes into a house, like, did the plumber cement every single fitting on, on the drains and waste? I mean, it's impossible to know that in some places. So just as, just as a point, inspection is not that effective. And what we need to do is make sure that our contractors are trained and licensed and interested in doing a good, good product.
Great. All right.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, I do just want to point out and reiterate one thing. When Joni's talking about our inspection service is possibly different than Las Vegas, some cities do contract out or outsource their inspection services. We don't currently do that. It's possible we could get to the level of development, we would need to do that, but we don't do that. And again, Councilmember Christiansen, our inspection services are, are, are done on every project in Longmont. These are just additional inspection services that insurance companies are really encouraging their developers that build condos and townhomes to undertake because of the ease of litigation in Colorado. So the next thing we want to cover, just.
Councilmember Levinson.
So I just want to reflect also, the wraparound insurance may actually be a reflection on the fact that subcontractors are smaller companies and they don't have the innate capacity to pony up for the, that level of insurance. So they choose not to because they can bid a job lower with, you know, maybe some lower operating costs. And then they're assuming that, you know, that wraparound insurance will be covered by the developer. So I think that there's a couple of different aspects to look at, because if, if a developer was working with a bunch of subcontractors that were fully insured, they wouldn't have the need for the wraparound insurance. So that would, but then, again, I think that would be built into a higher cost of doing business for those subcontractors overall.
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Levinson, that very well could be, again, we're simply reporting to you all what developers are telling us. There are a number of ways to kind of take and interpret some of the things that we've heard. So what I want to do with the, my last two slides is just talk about the common components or common elements that we're seeing in some municipal policies. And we've looked at the cities in Colorado that have adopted policies, as well as Denver, which has a proposed policy, but those are Arvada, Aurora, Commerce City, Lakewood, Littleton, Lone Tree, and Parker. And they all have varying degrees. They're not a one-size-fits-all policy, but there are some common themes that we're finding in two or more, which are listed here. First of all, they're providing developers with an opportunity to repair beyond what the state currently requires. So instead of the time limits that we showed you at the beginning of the presentation, they add on another 30 days, another 60 days, depending on what they feel is appropriate. So they're typically providing that longer time period to cure. Secondly, they're requiring mandatory arbitration prior to a lawsuit. So instead of going directly to a lawsuit, there, you go to arbitration, mediation, some form of legal process to try to resolve the issue before you get to the lawsuit. But instead of that being optional, as it is for anyone, it's mandatory, and there are different ways that that is undertaken. You can see there, well, actually, in the next slide, two slides from now, you'll see there, sometimes there's a plat note, and they can also put it in the HOA covenants that are just ways of requiring that mandatory arbitration. Also, these, this mandatory arbitration prohibits HOAs from removing arbitration clauses in their bylaws without the consent of builder, the builder himself or herself. So this is pretty common where, you know, you can't change the bylaws of the HOA with regard to arbitration without notifying the builder. So you can see that there could possibly be some benefits to that with regard to builder rights. And number three, it does, many of these do require a majority vote of the HOA in order to sue. So now let's talk about the different, differences in the municipal codes that you're seeing around the state. For one thing, there really is a variance between them on whether this applies just to condos or also to townhomes. There, I don't think there's an ordinance that applies just to townhomes, but you can have either condos or both condos and townhomes. You also have some differences in the right of the HOA to object to the, or the homeowner, rather, to object to the repairs that are proposed. So in that cooling off period, or in the time that we're, you're giving the builder the opportunity to repair or remedy the defect, there are a couple of different things that cities have done that either do not give homeowners the right to object to the proposed repairs that the builder, the contractor are proposing. And some of those do, some of the policies in different cities do give homeowners that right to object. And then lastly, some additional requirements, and again, this goes back to the state law, but there are some communities that are really trying to go beyond state law by saying that structurally unrelated building code violations, you know, like a plumbing code violation that's discovered later, but really had no damage or impact or injury or anything else, that really, that cannot be used in the litigation. So that's just going kind of a step further than what the state law currently does. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Harold to kind of introduce our, the final slide to talk about options that you might want us to research as we look at a policy.
Mayor, Council, I think before we move to that, are there any questions? Does Council want to have a discussion? But essentially, what we're, we're going to go through is that if you, if, if Council desires us to proceed, we're going to work through some components of that. But I think the first question is, just in general, based on the information we provided, what are your thoughts? And is there a conversation that you all want to have as a body?
Not so much a conversation right now, but a request. So could you bundle those different ordinances together so some of us who might want to do some light reading and go to sleep early one night would be able to do that? Just because, yes, I do light reading, and sometimes I do sleep. Yeah, only light reading. But I would like to actually, you know, do the compare and contrast and get kind of the flavor of the language. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I think that, I guess the, this is obviously a topic that comes out, it's all over the state. Well, first of all, before I say this, I want to apologize to city staff if I was a little hard in my comments during the previous discussion. The, sometimes I work with people and after four years, I feel comfortable with everybody. So I yell, scream, pant hoot, and slam my fist on the desk. So I apologize if I was a little short. And Jonathan Smith, I was actually looking up the book, but when I was in college, I wrote a, I read a Jonathan Swift essay about how difficult it is to communicate from one person to the, to the other person in a way that it's clear. And when you have seven people trying to do that, it's probably less clear. And the person who is ultimately responsible for making sure that the receiver understands the message is he who says the message. So if my motion was unclear, I should not have maybe been as hard as I said when I said that you guys, "Didn't you get the memo?" That was not the, that was not the, the, the message I wanted to send. And so after we're done during council comments, I plan on passing some specific motions based on our last conversation so that hopefully it will be clear.
Candy and flowers helps.
Candy and flower helps, you know, candy and flowers. So I think that the, I, I think this is a very complicated issue, meaning that as a lawyer, I have some legal concerns about our ability to dictate to the state. I mean, it's, it's going back into oil and gas territory again, home rule versus the powers we have to dictate to the district courts. What, anyway, it's a mess. And I would be, I am hesitant to direct staff to do anything without having more information. I think we should get more information, but if we're going to go into this, I think we should have an executive session on what's the law, meaning not just this, but specifically get legal advice. And I think that we should hear both sides of what are the pros and cons. And so I don't think we should give any direction to staff until we've had the opportunity to truly flush it out. I mean, I think this is great tonight, but until our attorneys have the opportunity to sit down with us, I think we should just postpone and table the discussion until, you know, it's not campaign season, until we have the opportunity to get all the facts. Don't push it off forever, but just push it off for now until we know what we're talking about. And I, I think if we move in one direction or the other, I don't think I know what I'm talking about, so I'd be hesitant to, to move forward. So I actually move, we table the issue.
Oh, I'll second that. I think that's a, a good idea for tonight, because I would like to actually get the input from our city attorneys to. Councilmember Christiansen.
Yes, I agree. I think this is an incredibly complicated project. I'm concerned about, I'm a topic, I'm concerned about developers who are trying to deal with a patchwork of municipalities, each one having their own little construction defect alterations. I, I think any of us who want to know about this could just look at the 10 hours straight of testimony before the Colorado Senate, and we would probably know more than we want to know, but at least it would help. to know, but at least it would help prepare us for this. So, that, there really is a lot of evidence, and I do want to hear about everybody. I think we need to postpone this until a better time. I do think that three areas that, or two areas that we should look into is, it's my understanding that Colorado construction defect law, which is really one of the weakest in the country, has no definition of construction, construction defects. I'm not sure that that's true, but that's what the Colorado Legislative Analysis said. And that seems kind of like not a good thing if we, you know, Arizona, Nevada, they all have a definition of what it is and what it isn't. I would say that structural things and even plumbing and electrical things would be good to put in, but we could exclude things like pain and suffering and hedonic loss, which is one of my favorite legal terms. That means the pleasure we might have had, had we gotten what we wanted, and we didn't, so we were going to sue for it. But, anyway, the other thing I think that would be really essential to not put into, if we decide to go forward to this, mandatory binding arbitration, which is being explored as illegal by the Consumer Protection Agency right now. That is something I think we should really not have as part of our agreements. Thank you.
Councilmember Moore? Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. First of all, Sean, I think you did a great job explaining construction defects and the ordinances that have been passed across the state. I have all of those ordinances. If you don't have them all together, I do, so I could send those to everybody. It has become a political football, and so, I'm perfectly willing to vote for Councilmember Bagley's motion, although I would, I would, rather than table it, postpone it because we do need to revisit it. And I think we need to keep all the arrows in our quiver for affordable housing, and this may be one of them. There is a reason all those cities pass the ordinance. So, we need to look at it. I would like to have more information, though. I'd like to have, I'd like to hear both sides of the legal argument. I'd like to have Jonathan Singer come in and explain why he proposed the bill that he proposed last session because a lot of people I know were really in favor of that bill. I think it would be good, since he listened to all of that testimony, to give us his, his thoughts. And, anyway, good job, Sean.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I think the suggestion of not only have, not only having Representative Singer come and talk, but also have his bill brought to us. But also, I would be more in favor of postponing than tabling. Tabling is usually killing. That rarely happens. And I would actually propose a postponement to a certain date. So, or, you know, it could be, it could be after the election or what happened.
After we have to, we have to have an executive session to-
No, and by that, that's what I mean. As long as we are still moving forward, again, laying on the table or tabling, tabling something usually kills it. Postponement is a better, is a better option.
You know, I'm a member of the Metropolis Mayor Conference, and, you know, we're, it's all the mayors up and down, you know, there's about 40 of us. And, you know, I think the consensus on that is that most mayors are for, you know, doing something to fix the construction, you know, they think it's a problem. You know, and that's why some of these cities have done it on their own when the legislators didn't take action. So, I don't know what the right answer is, but I think I need to get more education, you know. And there's someone in the audience that's offered to, I'd like to talk to her, I'd like to talk to you, Jean, I want to, you know, make a good decision here, so, and I'm not educated enough to make the right decision without more input at this point. Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I kind of spit that out. So, Mr. May, what, what, if we had an executive session on this, what, what's the timeframe that would not make you guys kill yourselves, that would put us beyond the election, where we could actually have an open, honest, intellectual debate on pros, cons, invite Jonathan in, all that kind of stuff? What's your schedule look like before I say anything?
Mayor and council, just looking to see if there are any pre-session scheduled. We do have new incoming council members. Remember that, that's drinking from the fire hose. And then, we do have COGCC rulemaking November 16th and 17th. And then, it's Thanksgiving, so-
So, like-
November's tough.
What about like the beginning of next year?
We could certainly do that, maybe the beginning of December? I don't know.
You're going to be busy in December.
Oh, yeah, we got oral arguments at the Supreme Court on the ninth.
That little oil and gas thing you got going on. What about like the first week of February, something like that?
Too late.
Too late, you think?
You can look at an appropriate date in January.
January? What about January?
Uh, you know, maybe the 12th, since people can recover from the New Year and then-
You're not going to party that hard.
So, I would, Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to, I'd like to withdraw my motion and issue a new motion.
All right, I'll, I'll go along with that.
And the motion is, I move that we postpone this issue until we've had the opportunity to have an executive session on the 12th of January, on or about the 12th of January, at which time it will then be placed on a future council agenda so that we can have a public dialogue and debate on the matter.
Okay, I'll second that, new motion. All right, we've got a motion, it's been seconded, let's vote. That passes seven to zero.
Councilmember Bagley?
Before we move on to the next topic, since it's kind of related, I just wanted to make a series of motions that clarifies, so, a few folks at break said, why, I just fear that we, we are still not giving explicit direction to staff. There was a, you know, there was a consensus, but I want to make absolutely certain it goes in the minutes, so that way, we know. Okay? So, and what I understood Kathy to say is as follows, or the understanding. First of all, I would move that we instruct city staff, that it is city policy, that they use affordability easements, specifically reducing fees, waiving taxes, providing rebates, or negotiating payments from the city and/or Affordable Housing Fund in order to address the affordable housing issue.
Okay.
That's one motion, and then, we're going to vote. And then, we'll go through the next.
All right, I'll, I'll second your motion. Councilmember Levinson?
So, I'm going to offer something that you should maybe be less specific, because if you're specific like this, you may exclude things that will be useful.
Councilmember Bagley?
So, yeah, so, I just move that we direct staff, that city policy shall be that we use affordability easements and establish, as a tool in our wheelhouse of the affordable housing problem.
Okay. It's better. Okay. All right, I'll second that motion.
Not done yet. I'm sorry. This is going to be existing, existing city policy from here on out. Without any-
Directing staff to move forward?
They have to write it. Then we get a chance to- Write it and get it back.
Yeah, right, yeah, right, yeah.
The way it's sounding is, is this is what we're doing.
No, he's directing staff to establish a policy that's going to be considered.
Yeah, the way I interpret it is, we work on it, we bring it back, and you all have to vote on it.
Create a policy.
Yep.
Okay, keep going. All right. I move that, that we instruct the city staff to create written policy and then bring it back for our approval, to establish a policy that would require the city and its partners to develop a policy of the right of first refusal to purchase rental projects that come up for sale as part of our affordable housing wheelhouse.
All right, I guess I'll second that one, too. Yeah, go ahead. Councilmember Levinson?
So, like, any, how, any thing that comes up for sale in the entire city? So, or is it just stuff that's already affordable? So, like, say, for example, Roosevelt Place comes up for sale, do we do first right of refusal on Roosevelt Place?
Councilmember Christensen? You were getting into the weeds here with what's detailed.
I know, I'm not sure I, we need to do this. I know, I know that you felt like, you didn't get, like, there were mandatory things, but I don't think that any of these were mandatory. They were, we're bringing them back for some more policy, and I, I just think we're really limiting things. And I would, if we're going to get into, I mean, I assume you're going through each one of these pages? Yeah, okay. But then, I would say that we would also, I would like to see this, as incentivize any conversions, be, I just think this is premature because we're, we're really limiting them on about what we're, what they can bring back again. Anyway, I would, I would, if we're going to do that, I would incentivize them to make any conversions be a certain percentage, to suggest that it be, that it be affordable. Thank you.
Councilmember Bagley?
The, the reason I'm doing this is because if we can't instruct staff with specific motions on each of these things, how can we expect staff to bring back policy? I mean, I don't want to, right now, we need to provide them direction, and if we can't agree on each of these things, then we have not given them direction, and we're not doing anything tonight. We're just giving them some ethereal, nebulous, cloudy words that they don't know what to do with it. And if we're going to move forward with the solution to the Affordable Housing Program, you know, it dawned on me when these comments were made that, I mean, if we can't agree on each of these, these are each of the things that we told them when Kathy was going like this, is this what you guys agree on? This is what we told them that we agreed on. So, if we can't figure out specifically what we're for and we're not for right now, tonight, they're either going to come back and get yelled at again because, oh, my gosh, you didn't understand us when we really didn't understand ourselves, so.
Harold, did you want to say something?
So, I think on that one, what we were talking about is looking at the ability to, I'm reading this, have a first right of refusal for existing affordable condos and townhomes. Is that-
And apartment buildings.
And rental, I guess.
Rent, rent, current rental units that are multifamily, having the opportunity to have the city make a fair market offer on those, those, those units so that if we have the funds, we have the opportunity to purchase them at fair market value.
And I would, and this is just a suggestion, I would say that are currently an affordable product because if it, if we throw, if we, if we don't put some type of parameter on that, then I think you do get into the world of, does that mean a market rate product that comes up for sale?
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. You got direction, I'm pretty sure, and we went over it one by one by one. Don't, I don't see the need for these motions. You have direction. And now, if you don't come back with what is on there, you're going to, you should get yelled at. But I don't understand, you know-
Well, let's ask it a different way. Is there something you think you need more clarity on that you-
I think, so, what I would say is, I think the clarity that we, we received in the previous conversation was related to, what was it? You know, it's essentially the, I think where this, where the question came in, developed was on the, the aspect of the targeted inclusionary approaches. And what we heard, and I think if there was an area where I, and I clarified it again, what I heard on the targeted piece of this is you wanted to look at the targeted components with incentives associated with it, not mandates. That's what I heard, and I think that's what I said earlier.
And there was consensus on that.
That's what I heard.
There's no need for these motions.
If there's not consensus on that, then, I think-
Councilmember Christensen?
Okay, now, I was going to go back and say, I do think that on the preserving, increasing affordability, we did have consensus that we didn't want to, nobody was for banning condo conversions completely, for instance.
Yeah, we only included the last piece that said that it was the first right of, what I heard was the first right of refusal. We have the opportunity to negotiate with someone that has an affordable product, say, an affordable product, and we could look at getting those first right of refusals on that product. We did not hear banning conversions. That was off the table.
So, as per what you just said about mandatory things, it might be easier for us, as you just said, to exclude the things that we agree we don't want pursued. And one of those is, I mean, I wouldn't agree with this, but I know that the majority of council agrees that we don't want to see mandatory mandates. We'd prefer incentivizing people, so.
Councilmember Levinson?
Yes, so, we can be absolutely clear about this. There are no minutes taken from study sessions, so I would suggest that we get a, I mean, no, a minute, I mean, minutes that are published and that we vote on, okay? You take notes. But to be clear, I think that the tape could be reviewed, and each of those little segments, you could put a check mark. Agree, you know, very supportive, not so supportive, likely supportive, you know, do that five-point deal and that you get in these surveys. And any pertinent comments that were very distinct from council members, put it in a summary, give it to us in our information packet, and if people are dissatisfied with it, then they can write another commentary. And I agree with Councilmember Santos, I think we're going to pigeonhole ourselves into another half-hour discussion on the pros and cons of the wording of things. So, if that is agreeable to the rest of council members, I think that's the kind of simple solution here.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. My view, so, we're a little early in the process to be beginning this specific. I'd like to make sure we keep as many options open as we can. We may discover others as we move through it. And so, I really don't think that we need a motion for every single thing that we talked about tonight. I'd like, I'd like to think that this is a process of developing policy, so that usually doesn't happen in two or three steps. It's going to take another, before we actually get ordinances, it's going to take more work. And tonight's intention was to narrow the focus, reduce the options, give better direction, understand it better, and move to the next step. So, I have to think that I, I won't be supporting any more of these motions.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Then I'm going to actually ask that we revote on the affordability easement and just strike them all.
Okay.
Since we voted on it. There was, I was just going, basically, my understanding is, we made, I was going to make three total. One, about the affordability easements. Two, about the right of first refusal for currently existing multifamily affordable housing projects, not all multifamily units in our town. And then, three, you know, directing staff to create incentives such as height variances, square footage allowances, and/or density bonuses for centers and corridors, annexations and rezonings. That was the, I mean, I just want to make sure that, I mean, we have consensus, but I just want to make sure that it's understood. So, I'm going to move that we actually revote on the affordability easement. The motion is, I want to- The motion is, I want to, I want to bring it back, I want to bring it back for reconsideration, so we can strike it down, and then you guys can follow your process.
Just because we, we voted down, doesn't mean we're not for it, though?
Correct. We're just, we're undoing what we did.
Okay.
We start, we got a third of the way through the process, and now people aren't going to vote, so let's just go back to square one.
Okay. And that's, that's a, that's legally okay. I mean, we can, yeah. Because he's the one.
Mayor and council, I believe councilmember Bagley moved to reconsider the prior vote, which is permitted under Rule 19.
Okay. All right, let's vote on that again. Okay, that fails. Sarah Levinson voting. Okay. And seven, or six of us dissented. Yeah.
Yeah, we did. I think we just devoted on it, too. I think it's withdrawn.
Yeah.
Fix our affordable housing program, please.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Kathy, before you leave, you have direction from, from council. I'm just making sure. I mean, no question, go back, look at the minutes, do whatever. I'm not, I'm not going to check off anything. Again, bring back what, what we asked, and then we'll have that, we'll have these other discussions where motions will potentially be made. But, you know, unless we're going to sit here for another fifth, 10 to 15 more minutes at brain nauseam, I think staff has it.
So, I, I, yes, I understand what, how Harold summarized things, so I guess I just wanted to say that when you'll see this again is probably first quarter 2016, after we get a little bit further down in the comp plan with some of the things, so that we can, again, really figure out what incentives could be, should be, and how to adjust them as our targeted component, as well as some of these other things. So, it will really dovetail in now, back in with the comp plan update, and it may not even be me presenting some of these things, it may be Planning Development Services.
Yeah, and I did want to, you know, so there were some, and I don't want to belabor this anymore, but there were some questions about zoning in those pieces. That work is actually being done, but it's being done as a component of the comp plan. This is a different conversation as those two come together. So I wanted to, to make that clear, that we are working on those pieces. We're working on them with the comp plan, and that's what planning staff is involved in.
Right. You know, another thing that we talked about was, you know, land baking and stuff, but, you know, the affordable housing, people, you know, Michael Reese and that organization, they do that already. And so I think it's, it's good that we really understand what all that they're doing on our behalf by doing some of that land baking.
We do, we work very, I mean, we work closely with, closely with the Housing Authority and, and what they're doing in Habitat.
It maybe it would be helpful to have a joint meeting with the Housing Authority Board. We used to do that quite regularly, and we haven't done it for a couple of years.
Yeah, that'd be a good educational piece for everybody.
Maybe right at the first of the year, we do that, or sometime in December.
I think that'd be a great idea. Okay, I guess we can move to the next item.
Mayor, I believe Barb McGrane, our Business Services Manager with Public Works and Natural Resources, is here to present on the utility bill affordability program.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. I'm here tonight to talk about the affordability program on our combined total utility bill. With me tonight is Michelle Waite with our Senior Services, Susan Weiscup with LPC, Ian Rollins with, is the Utility Billing Manager. And, and then one other person that I want to acknowledge is Becky Doyle, who was our financial analyst. She did most of this work. She compiled the research and designed the program, and she's not here tonight because she's at home with her one-week-old son. So, congratulations to the Doyle family on the, the birth of their son. But, so if I don't have absolutely all the answers tonight, I might have to get back with you because she did most of the research. So, briefly, what I'm going to talk about are our existing affordability programs. How does Longmont's overall utility bill compare to other cities and nationwide? Talk about the proposed pilot, specifically in the water utility. Get some feedback and answer any questions that you all have. So in the council packet, we actually had a link to the city's webpage on all of the different programs that the city has, and there are numerous programs, but I'm going to highlight about three or four of them tonight because they're the, the main, the main affordability programs that we do have that are existing. The first one is the LEAP program. That program is administered by Boulder County. It's specifically for energy assistance. You income-qualify. That money is given directly to the, the individual customer. Then they turn around and pay that bill to the utility billing staff. And because it's done that way, it's not something that's measured, so we don't, I don't have statistics for you on that specific program. The next program is the COPE program. It's administered through the Hour Center. The funding for that, customers can round up their utility bill or, or designate some set donation. Those payments are made directly to the city on behalf of a client. Monthly numbers are between 20 and 40 customers, but they don't, the staff don't track the exact dollar amounts, but it's, it's used to that level on a monthly basis. There's a low-income senior and low-income disabled customers rebate. There's several components to that. One is the discount for electricity. It's a $4 a month discount. There's about 90 customers that use that program, so that's, amounts to about $4,000 a year. There's also a 28% discount on the water bill, and I could not go back and replicate where that percentage came from, and so this new program is going to suggest another amount. Right now, we have approximately 30 customers that use that for a total cost of about $2,000 annually. Then, the electric portion of the bill also provides a life support discount. Those are customers that are dependent on medical equipment, and they also have to income-qualify. They, they get approximately $11 a month discount. There's about 200 customers in that program, and that equates to about $26,000 a year. So the, the total electric amount of rebate is around $30,000 annually. And then, the last one is the Parks and Greenway maintenance fee. That's a refund of the entire fee, and there's about $4,000 that goes into that program annually. And then there are numerous other different programs, whether you have certain kinds of, there's demographics with all of those, and that is on the city's webpage, and it's, it's usually, it's pretty easy to find. So, how does Longmont's overall?
Councilmember Levinson?
Barb, have we integrated a program where people can do a little bit of volunteer work? Like, I know the school district has a program for seniors with the increase in the meal levy that they can work off a certain amount of money that would've been an increase, and it's kind of like you have to live in your home for a certain number of years, and then, you know, I think it's up to about $300, and then they require a certain number of hours per school year for you to work. Do we have a program like that that might, you know, people, you know, give something back to get a whole combination of incentive, of, of rebates, if they're able?
Existing programs right now don't have something that, like that. So, it, you can give us feedback during the, that portion of the.
Okay.
So, so how does Longmont's utility bill compare? And, and we've looked at this several ways. So, the way this whole conversation started was when we talked about the water rates. And AWWA suggests that the combined water and sewer bill for a customer should be less than or equal to 2.5% of your, of your income. And so, we've looked at the median household income for Longmont that came out of the Consumer Expenditure Survey, which is a very detailed portion during the census data-taking. It was in 2013. And in 2013, the average residential customer pays about $614 a year for their combined water and sewer, which is less than 1% of that median household income. In 2016, our rates are going to be around $785 a year. It's still around 1.3%. So, when you're looking at averages, we are well below that 2.5% range. Another way you can look at it is, is what is the income at or below that, that will reach that 2.5%? So we're talking about a household income of around $31,000 a year. So then we went in and looked at specifically the Consumer Expenditure Survey for cities that are smaller than $100,000, not $100,000, $100,000, people in population. And nationwide, they suggest that nationwide, folks spend about 6.7% of, of all of their combined utilities, fuels, and public services. So that also includes, besides what's on our bill, the gas and the phone as well. And so we took estimates for the Longmont area for those and did it against our median household income, and we are around 5.5%. So we are, once again, below the national average. What that doesn't take into consideration are those very low-income folks that are, that are in our city. And so, the next thing that we did was we looked at what, what kind of income sources we have, and we started drilling down, and I, I want to give you some more information around specifically the, the total combined bill, what's going to happen in 15, 16 compared to 15, and then I'll get into the specifics about the proposed pilot. So here's, here's the combined change between 15 and 16 on the total bill. You can see that the sanitation is going to change about 7%. This is the average residential bill. I just want to clarify that. Sewer is going up about 3%, water is going up about 8% for, for a total combined change of about 3%. And, and when you look at the cities that we compare to, you can see, I think some of you have seen this, this before, Longmont's on the lower end of, of the range of all of these cities, up and down the front range. Our total combined bill's around $156. The average is around 173. We've normalized this data, so what we're using for water is 9,000 gallons a month, 5,000 gallons a month for sewer, and a 20, or 96-gallon trash container. We've, we've also normalized the data around usage for electric, so that's the only way you can compare apples to apples. So then, what does that look like when we're moving into 16? And this year, when we did our rate comparison survey, we not only asked what, what people are doing in 15, but what they're proposing to do, and I was surprised at all of these cities that are, that are up here. All are going to do increases except for Greeley, and Broomfield is in the middle of, of setting their budget right now, so I'm waiting to get that information. But if you go back and forth between these two, they're, they're all moving up, and relatively, the, the position is Broomfield's going to be moving down to the lowest. Longmont's still going to be in the third position. But, for instance, Loveland is raising their water rates 10.5%, Thornton's doing 12.4%, Northland's doing 10.3%, Westminster's doing 4%. So, there's a wide range, and, and all of these utilities along, you know, all these cities are, they're, they're raising their rates because they have to keep up with the infrastructure costs. So, and one last comparison I want to give you before I go into the pilot. Specifically on the water bill, you know, when you look at all those different pieces, I just stripped out the water portion of the bill. Longmont has the lowest water bill up and down the front range, considerably lower than even the average, and that's with the rate increases that we have in place for 16. So what's the proposed pilot? We've made a lot of assumptions on usage based upon the usage percentages of the senior water rebate, and so we're making some assumptions, so we want to run this pilot for a year so that we can see what the usage patterns are, we can see what, what percentages of, of folks are, are using, and so we want to propose the pilot for a year. We are, we want to do it in the single-family residential customers, and the reason we're proposing to do it there is because water meters in multifamily complexes are only metered per building, so if you have a building with 50 units in it, there's only one water meter there. And so, the water and sewer bill for multifamily projects are a component of the rent. You can't specifically strip that out like you can the electric bill. Electric meters, every unit in a multifamily complex, and water and sewer is not done that way. So what we're proposing is the single-family residential customer class. And percentage-wise, you know, we're talking about 24,000 accounts at a total of about 27,000 accounts. So, we are doing a large portion of, of the folks that live in Longmont. It's a, it's a, even in that customer class, if we just pick that customer class. What we are proposing to do is to discount the monthly service charge, and in 2016, for the, on the water bill, that's $4.90 a month. We, we want to keep in place the usage because we still want to send that conservation message to people. And so, that's about $60 a year. We don't, we don't know those specific customers, and so we would be guessing what percentage of their total bill that would be, but if, on the average bill, it's about a 15% discount. So that tells you how it compares to what we have in place for the senior rebate. And the way we've set the participation level at $90,000 is, is when we do our, in particular, our water rates. Because the water revenues are so influenced by weather patterns, much, much more so than any of the other revenues, electric is the same way, but water and electric are, are the same that way. We, the highest, in the single-family customer class, the, the highest rate of the tiers, what we assume is that that highest rate and the second highest rate, that, that money that we would collect is around $90,000, and that is going to help us smooth out that volatility of the weather pattern. And we're saying right now that that's, that's what we have basically available that's not going to impact what we have in for our O and M expenses and our capital program. Now, if, if, if we have issues with wide swings in weather volatility, it may, it may start to impact this, but that's, that's, that's where we came up with that $90,000 amount. We think that we want to, like I said, do it for a year and, and see what the statistics are and bring them back to you. If, if the statistics are as high as we think, the range could be, so if it's, it's the same participation level as the senior rebate, we're talking about $30,000 a year. It can be upwards of $350,000 if we get full participation at the, at the income levels that the census is, is indicating. So that difference above that $90,000 is going to start cutting into our ability to do our capital program and, and provide our operations and maintenance. And I wanted to give you a sense of, of what that would mean in terms of a rate increase for that single-family customer class. So that $260,000, if we needed to start making that up, if we really did have that level of participation, it's going to equate to about another 3% rate increase for our single-family customers. So, what we want to do right now is limit our participation level to $90,000 and see what, see what the statistics are, bring it back and talk to you then about getting further direction. So, specifically, the questions that we have for you are, should we move forward with this pilot program? And specifically, the water utility? Does council want to use, raise rates in other, in any of the other utilities to subsidize these, further subsidize affordability programs? Because in our sewer utility, in our sanitation utility, and in our storm drainage utility, we don't have anything like we have for our rate design in, in water, and so it, it, it essentially means we're going to have to raise rates in order to be able to subsidize our lower-income wage earners. So, those are the two questions I have for you, and I'm, I'm happy to take any questions and receive direction. and receive direction.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Is water our most expensive utility?
The electric portion is the most expensive utility.
Oh, okay. I do think this is worth a pilot program. I, I see what you're talking about, though. You know, you subsidize that and then it raises rates for everybody else. It's very problematic. I do have a suggestion, though, about, a lot of people who are poor and older often don't have computers, or they don't have very much accessibility. It would be nice to put a, just a little slip in once or every six months to give people the, a way to get ahold of these, either by phone or give them the actual website so they can, you know, go directly and know that they have this possibility, and explain that this is, that we're trying to do a pilot program.
Right. And certainly, Councilmember Christiansen, we will have a, a campaign of information out in the community to get as much participation as we can. But right now, I'm suggesting we cap. If we're lucky and we get everybody up to the $90,000 limit, then we're, we're gonna have to cut off that period for this one year, and then we're gonna have to decide and look at the demographics and the, the statistics around that, and then, and then get further direction.
Well, I fully support doing this pilot program. I think it makes sense. Councilmember Levison?
Thank you, Mayor. One suggestion I have is that I imagine the Times Call is gonna write this up really well, and I imagine we're gonna have a lot of takers. So is there a way that you can do the adjustment, instead of reducing it by 490, to reduce it by 390 a customer, and therefore get the maximum number of customers with that $90,000 limit? So how many people could you, I mean, if you were going to try to accommodate 75% of the people at that lower-income bracket, you know, where would be the sweet spot to give everybody that, that, you know, or 75% of those people who will become aware and want to do it, some, some portion?
Certainly, Councilmember Levison, we could lower the, the rebate. You know, we really want to try to target the water and sewer bill below, for those folks below that 2.5%. So I need to see the data first. And, and I, I, I think we might dilute it too much if we lower it. I, I understand trying to get more people into the program, but I, I don't have enough, we're making assumptions right now based upon the customers, and I need to see the data. So I'm trying not to put, put that off, but I understand, I understand what you're saying.
So is there a possibility that if this gets subscribed to so completely, that the first six months, you know, we've reached that 90,000 limit for the one-year pilot, is there a way that you could come back and say, it's being so well-subscribed? Is there some other little piece of money you could, you know, suggest that council could contribute to continue the access to the program that first year?
So I'm gonna say this with Jim Golden sitting in the back. But, you know, you could, other cities have done gifts of money from the general fund to their utilities in order to subsidize programs. So I know the general fund's very tight. There, there, there is no other pool of money in the water utility other than this.
So do we also put, when we do our, uh, deposits, like the equivalent of security deposit for water utility, do we put that in an interest-bearing account? Could we use some of the interest that we get off of having that money to contribute extra money to this account? Or, and do we rebate people's deposits with interest?
I hear from the back, yes, we do.
I see, I see a nod from the twice cup.
We do.
I hear we do.
Okay. And so could we use, possibly use that interest that, you know, the general populace, you know, pays, and we get interest off of their money, could we use some of that for the, to support the program?
So we refund with interest.
We do refund. So could we ask people when we refund, would you like to donate the interest back? I mean, I guess that's the other question. Or we could change the policy to say we're not giving the interest.
You know, it's 9:30 tonight, and we've got a lot of, yeah, 10, excuse me, 10:30, you know, so we don't need to get on the weeds with every single possibility, permutation of every single thing here tonight, or we'll never get through this. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would say I would be in agreement with moving forward with pilot program in the water utility. And do we want to raise rates in other utilities to subsidize affordable programs? That would be no.
Councilmember Moore.
Yeah, I think it, like to have you go back and go, and think of get this figured out and get, develop a, a pilot program.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. No, I do not want to raise rates in other utilities to subsidize an affordable housing program, and I move staff, move forward with a pilot program in the water utility.
What did you mean? You said affordable housing, you mean?
No, I'm sorry. You know, affordable housing's been on everyone's mind.
I knew what you meant.
You know what I meant? Well, the move staff to move forward with a pilot program in the water utility. I'll second that.
All right. I agree. Okay, let's vote on that. Okay, it's seven to zero, so I think you got clear direction on that. Move forward with the pilot program and don't raise other utilities to pay for it.
Yep. So, so Mayor and Council, I can, if I can make a suggestion, the, the last item on the agenda, we can pull and move to another agenda if you would like.
No, no. I, I think since, since Bob's been here, all right, let's just, let's go through it real fast.
Just, just giving you the opportunity.
No. I think we, we need to just hammer it out.
Speak fast and very briefly. Dale?
Are you gonna plow? Is this necessary? Is this, are you gonna plow?
Pick up the snow and plow.
I was just joking with them that, you know, now that they've got a four-wheel-drive vehicle, maybe we don't even need a snow and ice removal plan.
You have 25 minutes.
We're good. Go for it.
So Bob Allen will be here from Public Works and Natural Resources to present your review of city's ice and snow control plan.
We'll just have to take them writing.
Yeah.
Mayor Coombs, members of city council, I'm Bob Allen, Operations Director, Public Works and Natural Resources. We will not be using in any way whatsoever the word affordability in this presentation, so.
Thank you.
But a lot of snow and ice. See if I can find the, does that one work? All right. So discussion topics tonight, we've kind of narrowed this down to a, a discussion of the, or review kind of of our snow and ice plan and some related topics. I don't think we've done this recently. I certainly haven't reviewed what we're doing with snow and ice, and we thought it would be worthwhile to do that because we, we seem to be having changing weather patterns, for whatever reason, at least over recent years. And I do have a little bit of data that might, might kind of surprise you. And, and we're, we have a change in community, so probably changing needs. So tonight, I want to just kind of quickly review our deployment levels for our current plan, and then talk about a couple areas that get discussed quite a bit, and that's the downtown area and snow removal in that area, and then our bike, bike routes around town, and the bicycle community, and what some of the needs I think they've expressed to us. Snow and ice plan kind of has five basic objectives. Primary objectives, of course, are plowing the major routes so that traffic can move through the city, what we call the arterial routes, which moves traffic actually not only through the city but out of the city or back into the city. Collector routes that move from neighborhoods to the arterial routes, access to emergency services, access to schools, and then how do we go about deploying after a storm to kind of clear up the roads and make sure that we don't have a mess out there to the degree or the extent possible with the resources we have. So our deployment plan starts with a, a very low-level deployment up to one inch of just trying to keep ice off of areas where ice might form. It doesn't focus on removal, mostly on, on de-icing. A pretty minimal amount of work in this area, but we do get out quietly and try to, particularly on bridges and overpasses, keep areas that might otherwise become kind of icing hazardous clear, or clear from the ice. Zero to six inches, which is really the most common deployment. This is really, once again, plowing and de-icing activities. Six to 15 inches, we may get into some snow removal to supplement all the plowing and de-icing. And if we do snow removal, that would be predominantly on these arterial routes. We wouldn't move into collector routes. And that would really be in, in areas like Main Street, most likely. And then greater than 15 inches, and this can be, this can really vary depending on how fast a storm came in and what kind of previous storm we had. But we really put more enhanced focus on emergency services and keeping the, the facilities that really need to be open during a storm, possibly at times even when people aren't going to, traveling jobs. So we also, at this greater than 15 inches, have a potential for moving into residential areas and then possibly activation of the EOC. So just, just kind of to frame the problem, we have a double-digit snowstorm, in other words, 10 inches or more, once every two years in Longmont. So they're actually not that frequent. We have had probably more of them in, in recent years. Three of the last six years have been some of the heaviest snow years that we've had in the last almost 100 years. So we have had a little bit more snow. But the other thing that we've had that's, isn't really reflected in the inches of snow is more freezing conditions or freezing weather even after smaller accumulations. And so those can really be problematic for us, particularly if you have a series of small storms and that ice tends to build up on the roads. Ice is probably the most expensive thing to actually mitigate on the roads, if it's out there. So a lot of the de-icing products that we use actually don't work when it gets below freezing. So it becomes really problematic if you have extended cold periods. I'm not gonna get into routes that much. They're in the snow plan, and there's something that you can see on the website. I didn't really have any major narrative on that. But I did want to talk a little bit about recent program changes. We do keep with the resources we have and without overly growing the costs of the program, trying to look for areas of improvement. So one major improvement is that we've increased our cycle times so that we're actually hitting the routes almost twice as fast as we used to hit them. And this is a change we've made since 2012. A lot of this comes from rerouting, optimizing routes, finding better ways to use our equipment, finding better ways to use our staff, and really just trying to continually improve how fast we can move around the city and move snow. We spent a lot of work, or a lot of time working on de-icing operations. This comes in two forms. One form is using mag chloride, which used to be the primary de-icing product, to kind of activate ice slicer, which is now the primary product. Ice slicer is what you see in our trucks. It looks actually like a sand product, even though it's not in the trucks. We don't use sand and gravel on roads anymore. But the mag chloride, which actually created conditions of, of almost being more slippery at first when you applied it to icy conditions, is not used that much for de-icing. But it really works well to actually activate the slicer so that when it hits in freezing conditions, it can actually start to work. We have also started using brine on the roads. It's a very inexpensive product, and in effect, it just lowers the freezing temperature on the road so that we have, we have a fighting chance of actually getting snow moved off without that layer of ice freezing underneath it. This has been really actually very effective, and it's a pretty, pretty inexpensive way to really improve de-icing through the city. We've been upsizing and adding more of this pre-wet equipment on more, more of our trucks so that we can deliver it on all of our routes. And then we've also put more focus on bike lanes. We are starting to now use some of the anti-icing products on the bike lanes, specifically at the edge of the road. We're doing more widening after the storms and hitting more sidewalks in our parks program or the greenway routes. And then really, in 2014, we trialed some designated winter bike routes. I think, you know, those are in a slide, I'll hit, come to a map in a little bit here. But that was really more of a trial program. If we start doing more of that, that will add expense. We're trying to get an idea of, of how many people will actually use, you know, the bike lanes, bike routes if we do more work and clearing out there. So that's kind of a, I think, a little bit of a, an evolving story in our program and one we'd like to explore a little bit more. Finance for the program, it's the street fund that funds snow and ice removal. We have multiple funds in the street fund, or services within the street fund, but the primary breakdown is snow and ice, maintenance, all of our asset improvement projects, overlay programs of, you know, re, bridge improvements and reconstruction, and then the engineering studies and, and projects. And then major cost drivers in snow and ice really tend to be, obviously, equipment upgrades. Chemicals are very expensive and getting very expensive labor. And then heavy, heavy snow years and cold years really drive costs. So we, about 5% of that fund goes to snow and ice removal, almost half of it to CIP where we want it. So we're pretty efficient with the program, and we do quite a bit with a small amount of, of money. This shows you costs dating back to, and I apologize, I realize my numbers here on the slide aren't very visible, but back to 2008, 2008, 2009, that program was spending a little bit over $600,000 for snow and ice. 2009 was when the current Public Works and Natural Resources program was formed, and so we used a lot of efficiencies and equipment optimization and actually eliminating some equipment to cut costs. So there was kind of a reset back into that $400,000 to $500,000 range. That has increased, most of those increases relate to chemical costs and to conditions, particularly these colder spells that we've seen in the recent years that are really driven that program and program costs. This year, we're on target for maybe what could be one of our, our higher years that we've had. And a lot of that comes from last March and February, March, and April. We, we were out there doing a lot of work to keep ice off of the roads. Costs for extras, if we were to start spending more to expand the program capacity, these pre-wet retrofits to do more deactivating of the products that we use for de-icing. We, pretty cheap, get a lot of bang for that buck, about $8,000 per vehicle to do more retrofits. We'll probably do more of that. If we want to actually add equipment into that program, adding larger plowing equipment, around a core of a million dollars per unit, $35,000 for the annual costs on a unit like that, and then an operator, you know, fully burdened cost somewhere in that 50 to 60 grand range. We could also do more outsourcing to really do anything major for outsourcing. We would probably have to actually bid and guarantee some work every year in major routes to drive prices down. Right now, it's pretty expensive to have contractors on call for time and equipment, you know, in a bad snow year. But we do use them, we use them at times really to do kind of backup work, not very frequently though, and not much recently. They, they really can't help that much with a lot of the ice and de-icing operations. They're really good, though, when we need to move snow off the roads. Other costs, one lane of snow hauling, one lane mile, so this would be half of the road for one mile. For a major accumulation, that's in the $5,000 to $10,000 range, just to do some basic snow hauling and not having to haul it very far, dump it on a parking lot nearby. For a medium accumulation, about $3,000. I'll show you a couple slides that kind of illustrate why that cost is different. Neighborhood plowing for a medium storm, you know, maybe a six-to-eight-inch, maybe 10-inch storm, in the $15,000 to $20,000 range per storm for most streets in the city. A major storm, $50,000 to $100,000, mostly because that's going all- Or something like that, but you can't do that for very long before you start paying the price in the other, other operations that we have. So we do a good job there, but we just don't have anything excess to work with. Alternatives to add capacity, if we were to expand the program, certainly would be to add trucks and FTEs. Those would have to be split across needs and other programs because it doesn't snow year-round. We could certainly, as I said, defer some of our work, but you don't gain very much in doing that. We do think that there's going to be a need to evaluate capacity probably here within about a three-year horizon, unless you guys want to direct us to make changes of the current program that may require capacity additions just for those purposes. Here's an example of snow removal. This, I didn't have a lot of good pictures. This looks like probably a removal before a major storm was forecast, just to get, keep the accumulations down, because typically you wouldn't be using this equipment for the smaller amounts you see here. But in effect, it's using front-end loaders to, probably scrapers to move, in most cases, move it to a windrow that a loader can then come in and scoop up and then dump in a dump truck and haul off. For smaller accumulations, we can move the windrows, you know, partway out into the road, and we can use a snow blower, like you see in that bottom right photo, and then move it along into a dump truck. That's pretty effective, but the problem with that is that you typically don't need to do that for the smaller accumulations. So it's really, you don't get a lot of bang for the buck in doing that. There often, you know, we see, we'll get comments about why we don't, you know, plow out in residents or residential streets. And I just, I want to kind of demystify some of the challenges that you would have in doing that. If you start, in the storms, it would bring, you know, the most benefit, which are really storms getting into that 10-inch to 16-inch range, you wouldn't affect block most of the driveways in that residential area. And most cars actually then would not be able to move out unless we then started moving that snow. It's, it's interesting, if you look, I, the other day, I looked at a Volkswagen Beetle from, I think it was a '69 Bug. And if you actually look at cars from that era and look at the clearance even for a really small car like that, it's at least double the clearance of what a modern sedan would have today. So doing that kind of work would make it very problematic for getting out of a driveway. Most definitely would require snow hauling for any kind of accumulation that I think would be beneficial to do that kind of work. The other problem you have is you have a lot of neighborhoods without driveways and garages, so the cars are parked out on the curb. And so now you're blocking most of those cars in, in half of the neighborhood, or half of the neighborhoods in Longmont. You also have, you know, the need to juggle this with our poly carts, waste containers going out in the road and those routes. So I often hear, well, the city of Superior plows residential roads. Well, Superior and some of the cities that do more of that, Superior's a really good example of that. They don't have a lot of actually arterial and collector roads, and they have more modern homes that have driveways and garages, and most of those cars, most, most of the cars can actually get off the curb. So some cities can do that, and that's how they choose to spend a lot of their resources. They have a lot of newer roads there, so I'll be curious to see as their roads age and deteriorate, if they'll be able to continue doing that. But Longmont with a lot of the older neighborhoods would really have a challenge doing that, particularly with some of the narrower roads. Generally, overall, we don't get a lot of complaints. We do get some, so it's, it's certainly an area where we will get some comments every year. But it's not, not a high volume, not something that we detect as a problem yet. That could change. As cars get smaller, clearances.
Councilmember Lewison?
Sorry, Bob. We're getting close to the witching hour. I'd like to move that we finish this agenda item and the rest of our agenda, council comments and comments from staff.
Okay, I'll second that. I mean, we threw out five or six minutes, so we probably could have done that anyway, but. Okay, that passed the sixth one. The council's member Santos to Cindy.
People don't like it too long-winded in council comments.
So some questions that, and we can really take these questions as more rhetorical tonight because this is a conversation that we didn't intend to just bring tonight and make big decisions. Certainly, if you want to direct us to do anything, we're happy to do that. But we wanted to start this conversation, but, you know, these overall deployment levels that we have in the snow plan, do they meet our needs in the city? Would we want to start looking at more, more post-storm snow hauling, particularly in commercial areas, to really open up more parking? Would we want to look at more residential plowing? Is that a possibility? Or at what point do we start looking or considering that we may have to do more of that? The other topic that.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. My advice, and I'm not making a motion, is none of us here are experts in snow plowing. Do whatever you need to do to make residents happy, so we don't hear about it. And as long as you're doing that within budget, it's a winner.
You know, one of the problems that I see you have to deal with is residents will, will come in, you know, you'll see them in the TC line to complain about the snow, but in the weather forecast, it's going to be 70 degrees the following day, and the weather's going to take care of a lot of that for them, but they expect, you know, they can't suffer through one day of a bad snowstorm.
I appreciate the tough job you have to balance that out. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Come on, Mary, don't read the TC line. Come on, it's just ridiculous. So you're about to get the downtown snow. My only concern is that, and I don't know if it's our snow plows or other contractor's snow plows, that take, that puts snow either on, I know it has to go somewhere, but my concern is that it, sometimes it takes up parking spaces and/or it berms up sidewalks or, when RTD rolls through Longmont, bus stops. That's my, that's one of my concerns, and I, I hear it quite often, so.
Mayor and council, I think as, as that downtown area becomes more vibrant, we probably are going to have, to have more discussions about how we coordinate and tackle snow. It will drive costs to do it, so we are happy to keep everyone happy, but at some level, you would have to approve those additional costs to do that.
Make everyone happy, Bob. Everyone.
So that would make you unhappy. So, yeah, downtown, we talk about that. We're kind of talking Kaufman to Kimbark, third to ninth, and then the alleys. We do have increased work in those reconstructed alleys, and that's really driven some of the comments that we've heard. Certainly, those are one of the complaint areas that we've seen a little bit more is trying to keep the alleys clear and.
Councilmember Lewison, do you want to ask a question?
No, I just wanted to give you guidance on the residential plowing. You know, if school is out, let the kids play in the street. And if you plow, then people are not going to be able to play in the street. I just think that there's got to be a reasonable balance. I mean, if everybody is homebound and they, they've canceled everything and we're on skeleton staff, it makes no sense to start digging people out, because you'll have to pick and choose which neighborhoods. And we always hear from people in cul-de-sacs that they want their cul-de-sac plowed now and all the snow removed and, you know, no ice berms or anything. I also think we need to be cognizant of getting people out of their driveways. There are a lot of people that don't have big trucks to be able to, like, ram their way out, and I know increased residential street plowing means piles of driveways. Let people move around. I also support, if you look at downtown stuff, we also have to be cognizant of not only losing parking spaces, but being aware that handicapped parking spaces are absolutely kept clear because we don't want to create additional barriers for people that really need those accessibility services. And I know the Downtown Development Authority Director has been patiently waiting all evening to hear what we want to do. You know, I think that it's fair to the downtown area to invest a little bit more money because that's a main area of commerce. A lot of public buildings are around downtown and a lot more foot traffic. So what we can do to keep foot traffic moving and having people be safe as they walk will increase people's coming downtown in inclement weather.
Okay, go ahead, Bob.
So some of the, the questions, and you all have hit on these, in the downtown area, should we really be doing more snow removal to increase or to maintain, you know, a pretty good level of parking? I think that is going to be a change condition over time. I think we do a really good job right now. I think we keep most things open. One storm every couple of years definitely is problematic. Maybe one storm every year, a little bit problematic, but I think we're doing a pretty good job. But I think this is an area where we're going to need to continue having some discussion about what expectations are. The alleys have become a little, little bit of a challenge for us, mostly in that, as you know, the alleys look like a sidewalk for nine months out of the year, but the alleys still have a lot of storm drainage, drainage infrastructure that also caused them to freeze thaw pretty heavily and consistently during the winter months. And might we consider some different approaches there? From the technology side, we continue to look at different ways of trying to tackle that problem, but foot traffic is really good downtown, and the alleys in the summer, spring, fall months invite a lot of that. It'd be nice to find ways to maintain that during the winter months. Right now, that's very challenging and virtually impossible in some conditions. I put additional passes for roof shoveling. I think that that condition is declining and probably not one that's going to persist in the future. So Sean asked me what that means. So what we're seeing is, I think, for a lot of construction reconstruction there, we've seen contractors plow, or shoveling off roofs and then dumping it down, and the alleys right after we've gone through. And it's too much then for someone to move with a hand shovel, so we have to come back through and make additional passes. Bike route plowing, this is another area that, that could be a change condition in future years. You know, we, we get a lot of questions and comments about why we don't do a better job of keeping bike lanes open during, actively during a storm. And we often have to explain this and re-explain it, that the roads are crowned, we have no choice but to move the material to the side of the road. And you can't start even, even if we wanted to remove snow, you can't start doing that when you get major accumulations. And of course, that goes in the acceleration, deceleration lanes and the bike lanes. So it's very difficult to do that. And that's why this last year, we experimented with bike routes that would, where we could focus more time in trying to do more of that clearing, at least right after a snowstorm. But it's still a problem, and it's very difficult to deal with. That's also where all the ice builds up, is at the edge of the road. So we are using our best efforts. I think that we continue to find some better ways or ways to improve that. But major changes there would require really a different deployment than what we're currently doing. The bike routes that we experimented with are in blue. Sorry again for the small graphics. These weren't, these charts were created more for the snow plan or our own internal plans. But Mountain View, Sunset are routes that we're trying to keep open more often and more quickly after a storm and even during a storm, and we're using more de-icing products to try to keep those open because they offer east, west, north, south. It'd be nice to find another east and west in the southern part of town, but that's a little bit of a challenge with the way the roads are currently configured. So, you know, questions here, once again, do we want to do more snow hauling and to open up more bike lanes? Because in many cases, that's what we would have to do to open up those bike lanes. More pretreatment to prevent ice buildup. That's something we'll experiment with insofar as we can within our current budget. Additional passes, more during-storm, you know, work. What can we do to improve conditions out there? And we're, we're trying to do the best we can with the resources we have, but that next quantum change would probably require a different approach or different resources. And I don't know that this is really, yeah, that was a little bit about parks. So that's really all I had for my presentation.
Any further questions or comments?
I think you do actually a pretty good job. I mean, it's a tough balance to, you know, work within a budget and, you know, you'll never make all the residential people happy, but sometimes you've got to look at what the weather patterns are going to be and how to spend your resources effectively. And I think for the most part, you do a really, really good job. You know, I, I do think it's important to keep downtown kind of vibrant and clear as we can, but, you know, you still have to, a budget to operate with, so thank you for your presentation.
All right, now is time for mayor and council comments. I would like to start out and say what a fabulous job the Longmont Trojans did in their football game the other night. They had their star quarterback go after the first series, and they brought in a true freshman, a ninth grader, who struggled. But you saw the leadership of that team, the seniors rallying around him, trying to calm him down, and, you know, it was a tough defensive game, and there was like a minute and 35 left in the game, and this kid just gelled the, you know, just drove his team down the field and got a touchdown, and then got the extra two points and beat a really, really tough opponent. So we're off for the Longmont Trojans and the leadership on that team. Goes to show that it's not over till it's over. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. That was pretty funny. I, I want to remind people once again about the, the anniversary celebration out at the airport on Saturday. That'll be fun. I also got to walk with Chief Butler last Sunday, and it was a great experience. We walked in a neighborhood that I grew up in, in around 10th Avenue and Alta and the old part of town. And we, we just, it just really made me, once again, be thankful of all the people that we have in our community, because everybody we ran into was so friendly and, and really loved Longmont. Everybody loved Longmont, so, just like I do. So it was awesome. My business of the week, as is my custom, will be Bin 46, which is really the Modena Wine Bar, right there at the corner of Kaufman in Longspreek. They revamped everything. We had dinner there recently, and it was awesome, and the wine was great. And so we need to support our local small businesses, and let's go to the wine bar.
Councilmember Lewison?
A couple of, of things to report back. First of all, the Latino Chamber of Commerce Business Conference this year was extremely well-attended, and they had a entrepreneurs, a youth entrepreneurs contest that was very well, you know, a lot of teams, and only three teams could win, but there were a lot of good ideas out there. And then Lieutenant Governor Joe Garcia came up and did the keynote at lunchtime and presented awards. Also, there was an interesting summit on homelessness, and I appreciate the Heart of Longmont Church putting that together, along with a great panel, including some of our police officers, who had some very good comments and stories about how they are really trying to do good outreach when people are in some pretty desperate situations. Last Friday was the Colorado Municipal League Policy Committee, and they just did a kind of an overview of some things that would come up in the legislature next year, and no definite policy proposals or votes taken yet. So that's it.
Okay, city manager, any comments?
Mayor Council, actually, I don't have comments, but Kimberly needs to come up and talk about something related to the DDA. We need to, she has a question regarding funding for a parking study, and we need the direction tonight, so Jim can include that in an appropriation ordinance that'll come to you, and we're getting up against the end of the year.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs and members of council. As you may know, the DDA does manage the parking fund on behalf of the city, and I have never been to a board retreat where we don't discuss parking and where that doesn't become kind of a major issue. One of the things that we've been doing this year is working with the county on looking at different options, and we wanted to commission a parking study. Parking is a very personal and passionate issue, but we truthfully need the data to back it up and really look at capacity, look at turnover rates, look at private parking ratios, really look at all of the data that we need to make informed decisions about our parking. We love the increased foot traffic. We want to make sure that everyone stays happy and can come and assess downtown, access downtown and have a good time.